Ten seconds. Five. Good evening, everybody. I'm Vincent Salimi, the mayor of the city of Pinot, and I would like to welcome you with the entire staff and the city council after two years of COVID Zoom meetings. We are back here in the Chamber of Commerce, and I'm very happy to welcome you in person. Today it's March, Tuesday, March 15, 2022, and I'm calling to order the regular meeting of the Pinot City Council. Would you please join me in the pledge of allegiance in honor of the United States Military Troop? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all. Thank you very much. Item number two on the agenda, land acknowledgement. Before we begin, we would like to acknowledge the Olone people who are the traditional custodian of this land, who pay our respect to the Olone elders, past, present, and future, who call this place Olone land, the land that Pinot sits upon their land. We are proud to continue their tradition of coming together and growing as a community. We thank the Olone community for their stewardship and support, and we look forward to strengthening our ties as we continue our relationship of mutual respect and understanding. Item number three, roll call, city clerk report and statement of conflict. Madam City Clerk, good evening.
Good evening. Thank you. Mayor Salimi.
Here.
Mayor Protem Murphy. Councilmember Tave.
Here.
Councilmember Tombs.
Here.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin.
Here.
City manager Murray.
Here.
City attorney Kasher.
Here.
Thank you. Mayor and council, the agenda was posted on Thursday, March 10 at 4:00 PM with all legally required notices. A revised report for item 9F was distributed and published after the posting of the agenda. No written comments were received in advance of the meeting. Does the council have any conflicts to report on our agenda items this evening? That concludes my report. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda will be item number four, which is convening to a closed session. Tonight, we will have a public employee evaluation performance. That'll be the city clerk. Do we have any public comment on that item, Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. We do have one comment, and that is from Cordell Hindler. Go ahead, sir. Mr. Hindler, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you. Go ahead, please.
Oh, good. So, good. So, good evening, Mayor Salimi, council. My name is Cordell Hindler, and I'm a Richmond resident, and I think that Heather Bell has done a wonderful job as a city clerk. She makes sure that the agenda, as well as the packets, go out in a timely manner. So when y'all go into closed session, think of all the hard work that she has put into, like, making sure that all the material go into the agenda package and the timely matter. So, that's it.
Thank you, Mayor. We have one additional speaker, Rafael Menes. We've moved the podium. There you go.
Greetings, Mayor, council, staff, and members of the public. I'd like to echo Cordell Hindler's words and praise of city clerk Bell and add a few of my own. I don't know how many of you take the time to read over the minutes for the prior meetings attached to the agendas, but I recommend that you do so if you don't, because city clerk Bell takes a considerable amount of effort to go over all of the various comments all of us make, myself included, and summarize them, which is no easy task for dozens of different comments over meeting, over meeting, over meeting. I would hope that there would be more than two comments in praise of her work, frankly, considering how many people's work she needs to, how many people's comments she needs to record and transcribe and summarize as part of her core work as city clerk in these meetings. I believe that she's done an excellent job, both in working to set up this hybrid meeting format that we're holding today and in conducting the online virtual meetings during the duration of the pandemic this prior year, which is the primary year she's being evaluated on. So, in conclusion, I'd like to thank her again for her excellent work as city clerk and hope that she will be able to continue that excellent work long into the future. Thank you.
Thank you. That concludes the public comments.
Thank you. So, it's 6:06, and I will convene in a closed session until 6:30, and when we come back at 6:30, we will report the results from the closed session, and we'll go directly into the proclamation until 7:10, and then we'll take around 7:10 the public comments that we have. Just want to give a quick heads up. So, it's 6:06, and we'll see you back at 6:30.
And Mayor, just one quick comment. We have a public comment card tray just to my left here, so if you have cards during the break, you can go ahead and place them in there, and please be sure to write the item number you wish to speak on. Thank you.
Thank you. See you back at 6:30.
Welcome, everybody. It's Tuesday, March 15, 2022. Welcome back to our first open session to the public since March of 2020. I'm very happy to welcome everybody here, with the rest of the city staff and city council. We are reconvening from a closed session item, item number five. We do not have any reportable action at this moment. I will move on to, as the mayor, I decided to move on to item number eight, Proclamations, and I will go back to Citizen to Be Heard. Item number eight A, tonight, we have a proclamation for the recognition of Nauru's, and I would invite the entire city council to please read that proclamation with me. Nauru's, day of Nauru's, March 20, 2022. Whereas, Nauru's in Persian means "new day", marks the vernal equinox and the beginning of spring, and is about celebrating renewal, connecting with loves one, and honoring nature, and whereas Nauru's begins precisely at the vernal equinox, on the first day of spring, usually on March 20th or 21st, when the day and nights are equal length, with days then becoming longer, signifying the arrival of warmer weather, and?
Whereas this year, Nauru's falls on Sunday, March 20, 2022, and whereas Nauru's is the beginning of the year for the people of Afghanistan, Azerbaijan, Iran, Tajikistan, and a few of the Asian republics of the former Soviet Union. It is also celebrated as the new year by people descended from Persian and Iranian ancestors. The Kurds in Georgia, Iraq, Syria, and Turkey celebrate Nauru's as the new year festival. Many communities where people from these countries have settled also join in the celebration, and?
Whereas it is a time of great joy and family celebrations that are shared by people of all faiths in many countries, and traces its history back through the centuries to the ancient Mesopotamian civilizations and the Persian Empire. And whereas it is mankind's oldest known holiday, and is still celebrated by more than 300 million people around the world. It celebrates the triumph of hope over despair, and promotes values of peace and solidarity between generations and within families, and?
Whereas the spirit of Nauru's is embedded in a Hafsin table, an arrangement of seven elements, symbolizing life, hope, and nature, which is complemented by other traditions such as Hafmeva, a composite of seven fruits representing growth and regeneration, and?
Whereas, many who celebrate Nauru's honor nature with traditions such as jumping over fire on the last Tuesday night before the new year to symbolically burn bad deeds and purify souls to welcome in the new year, and holding farmers' festivals on the second day of Nauru's, or gathering with families and friends in nature to conclude the festivities on Sizda Bedor, excuse me, the 13th day of Nauru's, and?
Whereas, Nauru's is the messenger of better, brighter days ahead, and a reminder of what connects people as a community in Pinol, and, therefore, I Vincent Salimi, Mayor of the City of Pinol, County of Contra Costa, State of California, do hereby proclaim March 20, 2022, as day of Nauru's in the city. do hereby proclaim March 20, 2022, as day of Noruz in the City of Pinot. I will then invite the people who celebrate Noruz to come here and join me here. We'll be giving you the proclamation, and I would ask Dr. Abbar to make a speech as well as Mrs. Jordani, and then we'll take a 20-minute break. We have the cakes over there, and we come back. Thank you.
Okay, so, once again, thank you for inviting us on this beautiful day of winter in City of Pinot. I wanted to talk about what Noruz is, and you did a great job on the proclamation, talk about what Noruz actually is. But I just wanted to add a little bit note about that this is an international holiday that is celebrated all over the world and welcomes everyone to celebrate with us. I'm happy to mention that my son Ryan and my beautiful wife Arizona is here to celebrate it with us, and it's a pleasure to have friends of the Pinot City with us as well, as well as our mayor, Mrs. Salimi. I'm also, I want to mention that I'm the first generation of the immigrant to US. I came here about 28 years ago, and I've been practicing orthodontics in the beautiful city of Pinot for past 20 years. And this city has been very nice and generous with me, and I appreciate the whole community being part of the business-oriented city that this city is. I also certainly appreciate the freedom and the opportunity that this country, as well as this city, has given me to enjoy my life with my family and friends. Thank you for extending the March 20, 20th as the New Noruz Day in the City of Pinot, and on behalf of the Iranian community, I appreciate the whole city council, as well as our mayor, for making this proclamation to the Iranian community. Thank you again.
Hello, my name is Shaheen Jordani, and I live in Berkeley. I am a Farsi teacher. I teach the language, and I have been a teacher in Albany School District for 27 years at the same time, and taught Farsi in Persian community in Albany, and also in Danville for the past 20 years and about 30-something years in Albany. Everybody said whatever was needed to say that. I am very happy that we are here and we are seeing this day because recognizing other cultures, recognizing the fact that other people exist, and that they are here, and their cultural ceremonies and all the cultural aspects that they have and they are proud of are equally important throughout every culture. Then going from there, I just want to thank the City of Pinot and Mr. Mayor for recognizing this day. Because working with kids for about, I have worked with children about 50 years altogether, my past experience in Iran, then in America, and within that experience, I know how important it is when people have a good sense of identity, when they respect themselves. To be Iranian kids who are here are Americans, because as far as I know, they are citizens. And then, but learning about their culture, knowing their history, makes them a better citizen. Because when you have a strong sense of self and identity, and you respect your culture, you respect your background, the only thing it does, and again, this is throughout every culture, every group that exists, and will make the texture of this country, then that's why I teach Farsi, and that's why I think this day also is important. The more it is officially recognized, the kids will get representation, the kids will have a better sense of self, and they carry that better sense of self throughout their lives, therefore, definitely they become a better citizen for this country to serve, because that's where they are, that's where they live, and that's where their lives will be. Then that's all I want to say, and thank you so much for recognizing this day.
...
our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to honor the kindness of our volunteers and neighbors who aid families in need every day in Pinole, California, across the United States and around the world. Their dedication touches millions of lives each year as they carry out the organization's over 140-year mission of preventing and alleviating suffering and?
Whereas its volunteers are on the front lines of recovery, providing emergency shelter to families impacted by devastating floods, tornadoes, fires, and other disasters, donating life-saving blood to meet the rising demand of hospital patients, supporting our nation's service members, veterans, and their families, and providing medical care and essential resources to combat diseases worldwide and?
Whereas during the COVID-19 pandemic, the American Red Cross worked tirelessly beside its government, public health, and community partners to coordinate training efforts and a shelter exercise to plan for response during high fire danger and a pandemic while safeguarding the health and well-being of our volunteers, partners, and the people we serve and?
Whereas the American Red Cross Blood Services support Bay Area hospitals by providing them with thousands of units of red cells, platelets, and plasma for patients in need, which has been a critical need during COVID-19 pandemic. And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to honor the kindness of
And whereas March is American Red Cross Month and special time to recognize all those who continue to advance the noble legacy of the American Red Cross founder Clara Barton, who lived by her words, "You must never think of anything except the need and how to meet it." And?
Now, therefore, I, Vincent Salimi, Mayor of the City of Pinole, County of Contra Costa, State of California, proclaim March 2020 as American Red Cross Month in the city of Pinole, and encourage all citizens to honor our countless volunteer heroes and support the Red Cross noble humanitarian mission and vital work to prevent and alleviate human suffering in a face of emergencies. Thank you very much. Madam City Clerk, do we have somebody online to?
Yes.
Recognize the proclamation, please?
Thank you, Mayor. We have Rolanda Wilson on the line, a Red Cross representative. I'm going to go ahead and unmute you. Can you hear us?
I can't hear you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, ma'am. Thank you for waiting for us.
Thank you again. On behalf of the American Red Cross, everyone knows this has been a very challenging year for all of us, especially for those who have suffered through one of the many disasters that our nation has encountered. So when help can't wait during these emergencies, please know the American Red Cross volunteers and blood donors step up to ensure those in need receive relief and care. Today, our work is powered by 90% volunteers, along with community partners and people trained in vital health and safety skills. Their actions provide hope every day, whether it's rushing to aid people after disaster, supporting military families through the challenges of service, or rolling up our sleeves to give the gift of life. Last year in Contra Costa, with the help of many of our partners, we helped numerous blood drives, including 16 in Brentwood and two diverse blood drives in Richmond, with four more scheduled this year. In addition, we responded to an apartment fire in Brentwood, and with our partners, we're able to provide the necessary support to all our fire victims. And conquered the Red Cross Award, one of our most prestigious awards, and that's the American Red Cross Life Saving Award to Officer Aaron Kamash for saving the life of a two-year-old girl. Also, in Concord, we partnered in the Safety Fair at Total Santos Plaza and in April, our Sound the Alarm campaign, which will resume allowing us to once again install life-saving smoke alarms to the communities in need. And finally, later this spring, Red Cross will be conducting an evacuation drill for the 10,000 residents of Rossmore, which will be coordinated with all of our government partners. These are just a few of examples of the activities we've engaged in during the last year, and we look forward to continuing the Red Cross mission throughout 2022. Our community counts on Red Cross for help every day, and supporting our community is at the heart of what we do. Our work never stops, even during this pandemic, help can't wait. So on behalf of our volunteers and those we serve, we want to thank the city of Pinole and the City Council for standing with the American Red Cross. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Any public comments on any recognition tonight?
I don't see any hands raised. No, thank you.
Thank you. Then I will close item eight A, and I will move back to item six, citizen to be heard. Thank you, everybody, for waiting so long. And I will turn it back to Madam City Clerk. Can you please read us the new procedures tonight? How many cards and how many people?
Yes, thank you, Mayor. At this time, we have four public comment cards that were received in person. We'll take those first. So I'll call your names so that you know what the queue is. We have Bob Kopp, Peter Murray, Rafael Menes, and Roy Swerengen. And then if anyone has any additional cards, you can pass them forward. We'll also take virtual hands as they come up. It looks like we have two so far. So Mr. Bob Kopp, if you would like to take the podium there.
I want to pass this around so that the council actually see what's going on, going to be going on up there if you approve this. It's a disaster to start with.
City Council and all the people here. My name is Bob Kopp, and I've done a lot of studying on this. It took us months and months to get any kind of information from the City Council and from the Planning Commission. When we finally got the information, I made up a card thing, as you can see tonight, I'm showing to the council members, exactly an aerial view of what it looks like. It's marked off exactly where it's going to go, where it interrupts with the Goodyear Tire Store, Murphy's Pizza Place, and it goes straight down there to Fitzgerald Avenue. From this aerial picture, you see there is no place for children to play. There is, has to be at least one more traffic signal put in, or maybe two, so people can get in and out of there. And Fitzgerald right now is congested without adding 230 something new residents there. The other question is, what about the sewage coming out of there? We just spent $40 million upgrading our sewage treatment plant with Hercules. And also, what about the water for those facilities? As you know, we've been in a drought off and on for years. Now you want to put in 236 residents that we don't have the water for. And if you really pay attention to what PG&E is doing, you'll find out they do not have the electrical grid system to keep everything we have in Contra Costa County running on a hot day. When you come home, turn the air conditioner on, your wife turns on the stove, the oven, and oh, you've got to plug in the electric car. We don't have the electrical grid to sustain this. So now you want to add more things to the grid, more things for the water, and you're going to have a lot more maintenance for our maintenance people. And probably worst of all, it is going to be a disaster for the police department. They're going to be up there all the time, and I think it should not be built. We should try to get a commercial place in there so we actually receive money coming back and not spending money out of the city budget. The only one that's making any profit on this is the developer. He'll be making millions over years and years to come, and the city of Pinole does not have the resources to get more fire equipment because we don't have enough apparently right now. And now, if you had a five-story building, I was told that you might have to have a big ladder truck to meet the requirements from the state fire marshal. So that's about $2 million or more, and who's going to pay for that? Is the developer going to pay for that, or is it going to come out of the city budget? It should not come out of a budget, and it should not be built, period. Thank you.
Can we please take that item as an attachment for minutes or record? Thank you. We can take a picture of it and return it back to you if you wish.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, Council. Good evening, staff. Nice to be back. I'm just talking about the COVID issue that I'm talking about. I too want to speak about the Fitzgerald Drive Shopping Center. This is something that just kind of came out of nowhere and was kind of a surprise. And in my estimation, this project has been in the works for a long time with the amount of work they've been, have done already on preparing the project, its drawings and the like. And so it's not something new, but it sure is something that hasn't been publicized very much. And I just want to add to that, that, you know, in the past, councils have understood the need to develop the commercial economic engine in Pinole. Pinole Vista, that's Fitzgerald Drive, was our answer to being self-sustaining going into the future. Our center exists because we, the city, invested in the Fitzgerald property. We invested our time, we provided the finances, and our community's energy to make it happen. We did this for a distinct purpose, the purpose of generating commercial property tax and sales tax revenues for a general fund. The idea was for it to be a parallel revenue stream to augment our limited small-town property taxes. Today, as I mentioned, unbeknownst to most of us in the community, we have a proposed residential project threatening to take place smack in the middle of our biggest revenue-generating asset. I believe by its very nature and massive size that it will be detrimental to our fragile financial dynamic. It potentially threatens the city's delicately balanced finances. It will definitely create a gap in 2006 and '14 measure rest funds, and it'll take us, we'll lose a serious share of our state sales tax funds as well, and that is an escapable fact. I know that it will be said that there are state mandates, but nowhere does it state, even if it's detrimental to the city, it must be done. Beyond that, there are many more real-time issues and serious issues at that to discuss and be vetted out. Saying that a community awareness is lacking on this project is selling it short. Its impacts have not been adequately addressed or entertained by the community for any type of discussion and to be addressed, issues such as the loss of the commercial opportunity, which is a mantra that several of you used years, a couple of years ago when running for election, that economic development. And I'll say this, and I'll say it again. It all acts, impacts the community, impacts all of us. Thank you.
Greetings again, Mayor, Council, staff, and members of the public. Tonight, I would like to talk about a petition that is going to be before the County of Contra Costa with regards to its general plan modifications. As residents of Contra Costa County, this topic is germane to all of us. It is a petition on Action Network under the subtitle "No New Oil and Gas Drilling in Contra Costa," calling for a ban on all new oil and gas drilling within the county due to the immediate detrimental environmental impact of said drilling on communities nearby it, and due to the longer-term detrimental impact of extracting and burning fossil fuels on our community due to increased greenhouse gas emissions and the negative impacts of those greenhouse gas emissions on the climate, and the following on negative impacts of climate change on the city of Pinole, which have been gone over at length before, and I am sure will be gone over at length again in the future. I urge all residents of Contra Costa County to sign this petition. As the petition itself notes, LA County, a significantly larger county than Contra Costa, with a significantly greater history of oil extraction, has agreed to ban new oil extraction within its territory. Contra Costa County has only recently begun to initiate new oil extraction projects in Brentwood and elsewhere, which means that this is the ideal time to stop before it expands and becomes deeper rooted. It is important that we not destroy our future in the name of slightly greater profits in the present. Thank you.
Been a long time since I've stood in front of this podium. I like this because I'm kind of on top and looking down. I want to address a little bit tonight on residential replacing commercial sales tax properties, which what we're looking at here is the Fitzgerald Drive project up at the Vista Shopping Center. We worked many years, going back to the 1980s, on putting that shopping center together. It took 10 or 15 years. This shopping center was designed to be a sales tax viable development, and it was successful. It wasn't designed to be a residential development. Residential taxes cannot replace sales tax. It doesn't compute, and you'll find that out if you keep going in that direction. I don't know how much background the council or the planning commission has done in studying this project and some of the negative sides of what it would, what would happen if that project went in up there. First off, hospitals in this area are nonexistent, and when you add eight to 900 new residents to this community, you're adding almost 10% to this community. And with the other developments that are going in residential, it's very close to 10%. I think I figured it out. It's about seven or eight percent that we will be adding in the next couple of years. When you do that, you impact the community because you can't, you're creating a traffic situation where people won't be able to get there to get to the emergency fields. Young children who are ill have to get to the hospital, they won't be able to get them there. Seniors who live up there, they get sick, they won't be able to get them there. We're a small community. We're not a large community, and we have Hercules on the other side of us that's putting residential in like it's going out of style, and they're putting thousands of new residents up there. We still don't have any hospitalization for it. You have to go at minimum of Vallejo. You can go to Richmond-Kaiser, but if you've ever been to Richmond-Kaiser, it's a disaster for, there's so many people from Richmond and that area going to the hospital right now. It's well overburdened. If we don't start looking at our infrastructure and what we can afford to do and what we can't afford to do as far as taking care of this community, then I think that I would be very upset at the fact of all the years that we've worked to try to produce a pay-as-you-go city, and that's what we've done. We had some trouble in 2008, but we corrected it. I don't want to go there again. So please take a long look and make sure that all your bases are covered when you vote on this project. And please think about the people in this community and the adverse effect that this development will have on it. Thank you.
Hopefully, this is the beginning of better days ahead for all of us. I'd also like to speak on the proposed apartment complex for the Pinole Vista Shopping Center. The proposal to turn this into an apartment project, five stories high with 223 units versus commercial revenue-generating property, should have been put on the planning commission from the very beginning and not reviewed by an assortment of staff that is fairly new to the department and has little if any institutional knowledge. A full traffic study, and as I understand it, the one done was done in 2018, right around COVID, should have been done prior to administratively pushing the project forward. A study of this type of crime and accidents that have occurred in the area should have been researched, as well as an opinion from the police department as to how an apartment complex of this size will affect, and I'd expect adversely, the trafficking and surrounding properties. This would include Apian Way as well as Fitzgerald. Are the roads properly engineered for the additional traffic and pedestrian needs for a residential property of this size? Can the existing fire department adequately respond to these types of high-rise apartment complexes? Being that we are in forever drought and PG&E blackout periods, how will these units tax an already overtaxed and underfunded infrastructure? Were you aware that this project is not slated to have solar? It will be prepped for solar-ready, but they have no intentions of it being built within the project. They also aren't separating the project from the center. Everything will be open to the shopping center's parking. I think that this is by design, no pun intended, because they have requested a variance on their own parking needs. As far as I know, there is no camera system that's being required, and while this project will have less than 30 low or very low income requirements, the rest is slated for market rate, and that doesn't equate to affordable housing. This project is in the sole interest of the developer, who is also the owner of the shopping center, and needs to be scrutinized to ensure that whether or not it is commercial, residential, or some combination of both, that it meets the necessary criteria regarding all the safety issues and EIR concerns. I believe it is hypocritical of this council, particularly as it relates to promises of bringing business and economic development to the town to ensure a larger tax revenue stream and jobs, to allow this development to continue without large concessions. And how does it look? You're reducing commercial development, thereby reducing tax revenue, but you want at the same time to change Pinole from a general-law city to a charter city? at the same time to change Pinole from a general law city to a charter city for the sole purpose of increasing taxes. That just doesn't pass the smell test.
Mayor, we now have a virtual or a remote comment, Anne Ling. Ms. Ling, can you hear us? You can go ahead and unmute.
Thank you, sorry about that. And thank you for allowing me to speak today. I'm a city citizen of Contra Costa County, and I wanted to speak about the agreement that has been sent to all 18 cities, and it's an agreement from Contra Costa Animal Services. This agreement that was sent to the 18 cities for review was written in the, below the basic standard of care for shelters across the state, many of them serving much smaller populations with a fraction of the animal services budget. I am requesting that the 18 cities agree to increase the funding for animal services that was proposed, we desperately need it. However, along with the additional funding, I'm asking to cities to look at, to write a well-written humane city-county agreement, which is outlining all the services that they're providing for the additional funding they're, they're going to be receiving. When redraft, when considering redrafting this agreement, I feel all the city representatives should be involved on drafting this agreement. A bulk of the animal services budget comes from the cities. They should also consider reaching out to rescue groups and community members should be involved in creating this new agreement. In September 2020, animal services removed many of their services due to budget issues. However, they're asked, they're seeking more money from the cities, but they're not including those services that were removed. Some of those services were, field services decreased from 16 to 10. Their hours were reduced, the on-call coverage was eliminated, they stopped live wildlife calls, they, they stopped and now those calls go to the California Fish and Wildlife. However, they're not able to attend to those calls because they have four staff members for four counties. They also eliminated low-cost spay and neuters during COVID. They just now reopened them a few weeks ago. However, now they're booked for three months out because of the backlog. I, again, I agree that animal services needs additional funding. And I understand that the Public Managers Association all meet together to discuss this agreement. I don't think there is a question that they need additional funding. The question is, is look at this agreement. It is not written with all of these services coming back. It is very sparsely written to outline what services they're providing. It's a contract that is, will be for two years, once signed, and it automatically renews for every three years. The only way to revise this agreement is going before the Board of Supervisors. So again, I please consider going to the Public Managers Association and discussing this.
The next speaker is Annie Wright. I'm sorry, the next speaker is Lisa Fulton. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, good evening. Thank you for.
Ms. Fulton, it looks like you've muted yourself. Go ahead and unmute yourself again.
Okay, I don't know how that happened, sorry. I would also like to address the agreement between animal services and the 18 cities. I would urge you to take a hard look at this agreement because it's woefully inadequate. There are many services that have been cut, cut back or eliminated entirely, and you all know that the Pinole shelter has been permanently closed and that just, that puts a hardship on everybody. I've been in animal rescue for over, I don't know, 15 years, and so I'm on the ground a lot and I see so many cats, homeless cats and community cats. And there's a serious population explosion going on right now, and we've gotten behind the curve because of COVID. But now I, I am urging the cities, including Pinole, to reinstate high-volume spay neuter surgeries as well as vaccination, low-cost vaccinations. We desperately need these services and at least, at the very least, we can go to the pro-status-anti, at least. I mean, there's no good reason to not include services that every resident can benefit from, as well as the animals. And there is one area that is quite concerning. Cats are starting to be poisoned in areas where the population is exploding. So people are resorting to drastic measures, tragic drastic measures to control cat population, and that is so preventable, it's preventable by reinstating high-volume spay neuter surgeries to help us out as trappers that are on the front lines. And also, it's quite concerning about the wildlife response that has been cut back. They will no longer do dead or injured, they will no longer respond to injured wildlife calls, and that's just so cruel. I mean, we, we have to live side by side with wildlife and we owe it to, to the animals to take care of them. And there's a bunch of those here that have studied that agreement, and we would be more than happy to meet with any of you and discuss what we think can be great improvements to that agreement. Thank you so much and good night.
The next speaker is Annie Wright. Go ahead and unmute yourself.
Hi, can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, thank you.
Hello, I'm Annie. I'm a Contra Costa resident. I'm a lifelong animal lover and rescue volunteer for over 20 years. I've helped control the overpopulation of homeless community cats by trapping and fixing them and also vaccinating. I've foster kittens and find them homes, and this has all been through the resources of rescue groups that are nonprofits. They are the safety net for Contra Costa Animal Services. And I'm very concerned about the contract that was sent out by animal services to the 18 contracted cities. The scope of services does not outline the vital services, leaving cities vulnerable and responsible for services. Even before COVID, the shelter had reduced and even closed programs that are community-based. There's a return to field program that helped a lot with the community cats with getting them spayed and neutered. The TNR clinic is trap, neuter, and release that has a 60-day waitlist. The low-cost spay and neuter for dogs and cats, that reopened recently and it has a, it's a three-month waitlist now and very limited services. There's only two days per week where you can get vaccinations and two days for those spay and neuters. So it's very concerning when animals can get diseases that they spread to other animals. One of, one really important one, of course, is rabies, and that can be spread to people, other animals, wildlife. And another concern is the discontinuation of wildlife services for injured animals. We all know, we live in the, in a beautiful area where we have wildlife, and unfortunately they will, you know, be hit by cars and, and have other injuries, and that means that animal's going to be laying there unless a good Samaritan comes by and helps it out. And then there's still no transportation for that animal. Lindsay Wildlife does not provide that, neither does the Fish and Game Department, who is what animal services tells you to call. And then wildlife, the Fish and Game tells you to call animal services. So this is a real injustice here to the communities and our animals, and it is just such a crisis situation. I really urge Pinole leaders to please listen to your tax-paying citizen, meet the needs of us and our beloved cats, and I thank you very much for listening.
The next commenter is Hulan Barnett.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you, go ahead, please.
Okay. Yeah, my name is Hulan Barnett and I'm.
We've lost your audio, Mr. Barnett?
I'm a resident of Richmond, one for the county, so I'm running primarily because of just the neglect that I see in our district, the blight, the quality of life issues as it pertains to families and seniors, and just the fact that the services that we need in the community, the fact that the services that we need from the county to work with the cities of Pinole, all the way to, through to El Cerrito and Kensington are lacking. And as somebody just indicated, you can see it with the animal shelter program closing. And my daughter goes to martial arts in Pinole at Doomlows, and every time we drive up there, we, we would, used to go in and take a look at the animals, but now it's been closed since the beginning of COVID, and we're just wondering why that happened, and we would like to try and bring it back if possible. But in addition to this, the other things that I'm finding concerning are the traffic problems. And I don't know if that's in Pinole, I can't say that, but I can definitely say over here in Richmond, El Cerrito, El Sobrante, it's, it's definitely a problem for traffic safety. And so that's one that needs to be worked on. But I think the biggest one that I think the county owes to, to all the communities is the fact that businesses were lost during COVID and the shutdown killed numbers of businesses. And the fact that those businesses have not returned or they're continuing to leave, the county needs to think of ways of supporting businesses so that they will come back, so that we're not having to go over to the 680 corridor to, to get services. So that, those are things that I see just on a, on a, on a primary basis for people in District One that we're not getting. The great thing I love about Pinole, because I'm there often, is that I can go to Fitzgerald Park, take my daughter, you know, I live in Richmond, I'm there often, I go to my barber, who's at Fitzgerald Park. I also had the opportunity to be with the group when they gave away the backpacks and to donate a bounce house from my business. So I, I really look at Pinole as a, as a really positive community, but the most, the other thing I would add is that Pinole, I think, has a good model of supporting its residents. And that's the one that I think in the other communities, especially Richmond, they struggle with. So again, I'm running for county supervisor. You can reach me and I'll come back to the next meeting, I think my time is up, so thank you.
It looks like that was our final comment for this agenda item.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, just a point of.
That's something that I think we're all very appreciative of in terms of.
Thank you, just a point of clarification. We have made a request on January 18th to have a presentation from animal services on, on closure of Pinole animal shelter, current service level and fees and future plans. It's an item that we requested back in January, and if it's possible, when we bring it back to the Council, if we could address those comments that were brought up to our attention tonight, I would appreciate it. Thank you. Mr. City Manager, do you have any updates on that Fitzgerald project, please, to give us tonight? Related to Kmart location.
Other than what has been shared, I think, through various communication channels that the application has been submitted by a developer, it's going through the city review process, the city council establishes the policies, our general plan and our zoning ordinances. So cities' role in reviewing an application like that is to make a preliminary determination about whether the application meets the city's standards that have been created by the city council. And then there are various rounds of review and potential appeals depending on where it goes from there. So there's nothing more to share. I believe that the item is now, the application is now slated to be heard by the Planning Commission in late April.
Late April, thank you. This, I believe, concludes item six. Then I will move on to item seven, 7A, mayoral reporting announcement. I would like to welcome everybody again to this chamber. I do remember two years ago, Mayor Suringen was our mayor and Mayor Murray was seated on my left and we closed everything, and it was unexpected. And I remember going to the city manager Murray's office and the mayor at that time, Suringen, he told me that we as a nation survived a worst crisis and will come back even stronger. And I went back home and I said that to my wife and I said, it's going to be two years difficult, two difficult years while we come back, but tonight we are back and I think it's, it shows how strong as a nation we can handle every single challenges as long as we stay united. Thank you, sir. Welcome again. That concludes my reports. Then I will move on to item 7B, mayoral and council appointments. We don't have any tonight. Item 7C, City Council Committee Reports and Communication. Good evening, Mr. Mayor Protem Murphy.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Devin Murphy, your Mayor Protem. It is great to be here tonight in person, and I am looking forward to hopefully what is moving forward for our city. I know it's been a very, very tough two years, and I am so, so looking forward to us reaching out to our public in person now that we have in-person council meetings. A couple of reports for tonight. First and foremost, I wanted to invite the public to the next MCE board meeting, which is this Thursday at 7:00 PM. If you are out there and you're thinking about your electricity bills like many people are, this meeting is going to be very important for you. We're going to be talking about the 2022 through 2023 fiscal year budget. We'll also be considering an additional $5 million for our MCE CARES credit program. The reason this is important is because this helps folks who are still dealing with the impacts of COVID-19, as well as folks who are still dealing with other issues. And if you're someone who is thinking about your electricity bill at 2:00 AM, we want to come and we want to hear you. You can make public comment just like you can make public comment here, and it starts at 7:00 PM. We'd love to have you there. I want to also invite the public, the city of Pinole, and also other interested individuals to my monthly coffee and conversation. That's this Sunday at 9:00 AM at East Bay Coffee. If you're someone who likes to talk about issues that are impacting Pinole, likes to talk about issues that are impacting the environment, or just generally want to have a conversation with someone after what has been a rough two years, this would be a great opportunity for us to chat. And last but not least, I want to take a moment to thank our Contra Costa County Congressional Delegation, our Representative Mike Thompson, as well as Representative Mark Tesagne, as well as Representative Jerry McNerney. We now have an additional $3 million for behavioral health services in Contra Costa County because of their leadership. That's a big deal for our city, and that's a big deal for our county. So thank you so much to our representatives for your advocacy, and again, I'm looking forward to a great year in 2022 and looking forward to communicating more with other council members as well as the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez-Uben.
Thank you, Mayor Salini. I have no committee reports since last we met, but I do want to wish everyone a happy spring and welcome back to chambers. I will be joining you at the next meeting there, and I appreciate all the effort that staff has made and as well council members and the public to continue practicing some public health measures to reduce exposure to COVID. to continue practicing some public health measures to reduce exposure to COVID. Although we are back, there are still episodes or instances where COVID can continue and be transmissible and to be determined, you know, to be seen as we progress. I'm hopeful, as many of you are as well, that we do not enter into another period of a surge. And toward that, request, recommend, encourage everyone to continue masking, continue social distancing and, as possible, vaccinating. Thank you. Be well.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Toms, good evening.
Yes, good evening. I'll report on a few of the meetings that I have attended. I attended the quarterly wastewater meeting with Councilmember Tave. And my big takeaway from that is the monthly flow data. And I wanted to share that with everyone. That, an example would be that, you know, Pinole and Hercules share the wastewater treatment plant. And in November, Pinole had 32% of the flow. But then in December, because of the rains, that flow percentage moved up to 62%. That's a significant amount of flow that is coming in from rainwater seeping into our pipes. So that's just an example of where our infrastructure is really failing us in Pinole. And I just wanted to, to just share that bit of information. I thought it was pretty glaring when it was presented to us. And then I attended the Westcat meeting last week. And the basic part of the meeting was working on the grant funding, the annual grant fundings for operating the transit system. Very standard discussion. The, you know, we did discuss the ability to do some grant that provides some free rides. And that might, although those have not been designated, it could occur if we have, for instance, a spare the air day or if there's a regional effort to try to get people back on transit. So those days have not been set up yet. But the grant to provide finances for that is underway. And then the last item is that the Bayfront Chamber of Commerce met this morning. They do have an event planned for March 27th. It's called Bottles and Bytes. It's going to be in Hercules. And that's just a reminder that the Bayfront Chamber is a chamber that is Pinole, Hercules and Rodeo. And a few other dates. This next one conflicts with our council meeting, April 19th. But there is a spring mega mixer opportunity. And that's going to be at Four Fools Winery in Rodeo. So if some of our business community wanted to go out and, you know, make some business connections, that would be great. There's a couple of other items coming up. I've been advised that the summer mega mixer is likely July 28th. And I believe that's a Thursday night so that it wouldn't conflict with any of those, our council meeting. And I think that wraps it up.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. Councilmember Tave, good evening.
Good evening, Mayor. So I just want to touch on one thing. May 7th, the Pinole Garden Club is going to be hosting their plant sale. So I just wanted to put that out there. It's at the Pinole Valley Community Church. So if everybody can come out, it's usually a great event. They usually sell out. So make sure you're there early. I just want to expand a little bit on the wastewater committee meeting. As Councilmember Toms mentioned, inflow and infiltration is when water gets into our system and adds to the additional work the wastewater plant has to do to filter that. That's why we did the sewer master planning. We have to get our hands and arms around how, how big this problem might be. This didn't happen overnight. It's been happening for quite some time. And Pinole really needs to start putting that plan together. And I'm hoping the city manager can weigh in a little bit about timeline as far as where we are. We did talk a little bit about that. We also talked about a maintenance plan that our, our plant superintendent had. And that's one thing that this meeting does is go over what levels of maintenance needed, what type of upgrades are needed between the two cities. So I believe we're going to have a little bit more of a report our next meeting. But this was our first for, for quite some time. So those discussions should be happening. And again, there's public comment, so please feel free to come to that meeting as well. You know, it's just really determining that magnitude of how, what we're working with, similar to the way we did with the roads. It's a $42 million issue. So we need to understand what that means for our sewer lines as well and how the, how the citizens are, you know, what that interaction is going to be to repair it. So the other meeting that we went to was Reshakamore and the Wickham meeting. And it was, you know, very quick. I think we just went over a couple of items, but the director had to come back. So we're hoping to hear back from them then. So that's all from me, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember Tave. That concludes item seven C. Let's move on to item seven D, council requests for future agenda items. Councilmember Toms, please go ahead.
I have no items.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
Thank you. I'm thinking about what I'm going to request. There are a lot of comments made earlier about one particular housing development project. And when it comes to private property and what the city is obligated to do, given mandates, it's not only housing, but any other mandate that is unfunded, puts a burden on, on the city. So I'd like to have staff prepare for us something. And I'm not sure which, which would be best, how, what format it would be best. So that we have a sense, as council members have a sense of how, in, how indeed, given the mandates that are in place, and we're probably, we're going to be hearing more about that shortly with regard to housing in particular. But there are others that, that we're likely to face. What is really feasible? What is it, what are the most pressing impacts? We've heard comments related to infrastructure. We continue to be challenged by the inability to fund and maintain maintenance and any new projects related to infrastructure. And although federal funds are coming our way, that's great. I just don't know whether we simply wait for that. I think there ought to be some proactive action to take. So my request would be for staff for an agenda item that allows us to think through what those long-term impacts are related to the mandates, at least the ones we're aware of.
Can you just precise what you stated, long-term?
Agenda, agenda time for staff to prepare for us what mandates are in place, not only related to housing. Those are probably the most current, most pressing, most obvious ones. But others that the city faces for which there continue, for which there exists a lack of funding and how we need to plan.
Mr. City Manager, did you understand the request of Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
So just make a couple of observations and maybe ask for some clarification. So the, there are all sorts of unfunded state mandates. It's kind of a catchphrase, many of which don't have to do with land use planning at all. So I think one point of clarification is, are we talking about state requirements related to land use decisions? Because that's an entire bucket versus other types of state mandates. So that, I think, is.
It's, it's all the buckets.
All the buckets.
Right. It's, it's, for us to get an overview of that. Because right now, you know, the big, the big topic is housing. So it seems to be obvious and we have one project, you know, in the pipeline. But there's more to be thought about because there are other mandates. And I am thinking that it's probably not too early to, given that we've got some current examples of how those mandates are going to impact infrastructure here in Pinole, that we can also think about what else is, needs to be put into place, what else needs to be planned for to, to help support the impacts of those mandates beyond just housing.
Mr. Mayor?
Councilmember Toms, please go ahead.
Yeah, I just, I, I think I know where Councilmember Martinez Rubin is, is coming from. But I think that that's the housing piece of it. We will start to address that at our next meeting when we have a housing workshop. And then we are also going through general plan amendments. And that seems to be the, the mechanism in which we will have that review.
City Manager Murray, please go ahead.
So just to piggyback on Councilmember Tom's comments, we are going to be talking quite a bit about state housing requirements. I, I'm reluctant to use the word mandates because the state isn't mandating that we develop housing. But they do have some new requirements regarding approvals. So there, we are going to be talking about state-related housing legislation. We also have a number of impact fees in place that are intended to recoup from developers some of the expenses that the city, the community is going to be born with. And that'll come up as part of our master fee schedule. So we do have a lot of irons in the fire related to this topic. That said, the city attorney and I, I'm sure, would be happy to shape an item to come back with the city council to, to get this conversation started. And then we could do some additional research and make presentations on particular items of interest to the city council. So there is enough guidance there for us to, to act on that if the city council would so desire.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
I think, thank you, thank you, Councilmember Toms and City Manager. I think what, what happens, I know what I feel is comparable to, to reading a table of contents, you know, thinking linearly where one, you know, there are some things that just occur over a period of time. And they're all related. And what I am lacking is that we've seen the relatedness. And however we can do that, however we can do that, if, you know, there are going to be discussions that include the impact of requirements/mandates on infrastructure as we move along. That's great. At some point, at some point though, if we can have all those pieces presented, and I'm sorry, I can't be any more descriptive about this. But I'm trying to get at, at a better understanding of all the complexity, which, which is really an ongoing, ongoing challenge that I think we face just by the, the mere nature of how we conduct city business, you know, which is one, one meeting at a time, one topic at a time. And yet the issues that we are facing are multifaceted. So thanks for hearing me out. And I will, I, you know, just be attentive to how we proceed and maybe bring something back as a, as a request later. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez Rubin. Councilmember Tave?
Yeah, this is more of a request for information or maybe it could be memo form. A while back, we talked about grants and I think we're going to be talking about that. I guess my question and, and maybe, I don't know if this is something that would be an agenda item, but, or included in that grant discussion, like how well we're doing in reporting. But I'm looking at master agreements on the state level, procurement agreements that, that wind up happening, happening across the state, cooperative agreements where the state is bidding projects as a whole to get some type of discount for, for purchases. Do we have any mechanisms, I guess, that the city can opt into to kind of leverage those cooperative agreements or masters agreements? It's more of a question. I'm not sure if it's something that we can opt into or have already done so. It just comes up when we bought equipment. I think a bucket truck was one of them. We just purchased a lot of street equipment to do repairs. I'm just wondering, how does the city opt into those programs? And, and how many can, can we actually manage if we did to, to maybe get 10? I mean, I know there's like 10% and 20%, depending on what, what dollar value. I mean, a lot of times for the dollar value you're spending. I don't know if that's something, but if, if the city manager can produce that and then get it to the council so we can have an understanding of how the city's, you know, buying, buying or purchasing.
Sure, I'd be happy to assemble some information on that. As you know, we pretty recently updated our procurement policy. That does allow us to piggyback on cooperating purchase, cooperative purchasing agreements. We use that for telephone services and a lot of equipment purchases. It can be both state foundational cooperative purchasing arrangements, but also we can piggyback on those of other public agencies. So we have a lot of different opportunities and I'm happy to prepare some information for the city council on that.
I, I think there's one with mechanical equipment and that are coming out. And I know that as inflation starts to go up, any way we can kind of curb that, I think the city should be looking at that. But I'm wondering if we could just maybe do a memo across, across the council so we can all be informed and, and see if there's any opportunities that we can take on. I'm hoping that that's something that may leverage us to take on a larger project at a discounted rate. But I guess more to come. Thank you.
Thank you. So it's noted and we'll get back to the council with the request. Thank you. Mayor Protem Murphy, please go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I want to move to ask that we have a future agenda item for the council to consider a letter of support for Assembly Bill 1814, which would allow for community choice aggregators like MCE to submit applications to the California Public Utilities Commission in order to receive funding for transportation electrification programs.
Thank you, Councilmember Murphy. And this is something that MCE is in, in favor of doing, correct?
They are absolutely, yes.
Yes. So as a member of MCE, if they're advocating us to do it, something that the city is advised to follow and support. So I'm in favor of it?
Yes. Oh, it's a, for the item to come to the agenda for a future reference, just to be clear.
Restate?
My ask is for us to consider a letter of support at a future council meeting and support at the panel.
No, yes. Yes, Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
Yes, I have to learn more about that. So I hope the agenda item provides us that.
Yes. So it's five yeses.
Wonderful. Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome. Any other item?
Not, not anymore.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. I do have one item tonight. I would like to have an item with the council to request, to discuss about the here front worker pay. I know that we had, had that discussion last year related to the money that we get from COVID relief. But we had an item, we really haven't discussed that, but if we could provide type of benefits or rates increase or bonus, I don't know, discussion we can have in close session with the city council related to our frontline workers. That's my request. Councilmember Tom, Tave?
Yeah, I just have a question. I thought that when we had that discussion special meeting that our HDL consultant advised against that.
He stated that the money could not be allocated for that purpose. But I would be more than happy to have staff to come back to us and provide us further information. But it is my understanding from other cities in the Bay Area and our county that they were able to move.
Okay. As long as we can have a discussion, I think that's, that's reasonable.
Yes, for you. Councilmember Mayor Protem Murphy?
I support.
Thank you. Councilmember Toms?
Yeah, we're already discussing contract negotiations. Is that appropriate to just add that aspect?
Yeah. I, I would say that we are negotiating contracts negotiation, not with all the unions at once, but because they are not at the same time, I'm just, I'm going to be broad in general for everybody at this moment.
Okay, thank you. Yeah.
Yes, thank you. Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
Was that last comment, Mayor, you're going to be broad? There's no specific group that you're thinking about? that you're thinking about? Because I missed that part of it.
Not a specific union, correct.
Okay, thank you. Yes. Yes?
Thank you. Five yeses. So that will be brought up as a closed item? Is that correct?
Yes.
Thank you. I don't have any other requests for tonight. Thank you, everybody. That concludes item seven.
Excuse me, Mayor. We do have some public comment on this item.
Yes, please go ahead.
In person, we have Rafael Menes.
I'm not sure. Audio seems to have gotten slightly more finicky. There we go. So I would like to again ask that the city consider having as a future action item, a proclamation in support of Ukraine. I would note that at this point, there are now news articles stating that the city of Aspen in Colorado passed a proclamation on March 8th in support of Ukraine stating in part, "We are condemning the act of Russian aggression. We support the government and people of the sovereign nation of Ukraine, and we urge the Aspen community to contribute resources to aid the people of Ukraine." So this is the sort of proclamation that other cities have seen fit to issue as within their remit. As to why it's important that the city of Pinole condemn this war, it's because Russia has chosen to wage war in a manner which is barbaric and outside of the laws of war. They're deliberately bombing maternity hospitals, as has been noted on March 9th in Mariupol, bombing during a ceasefire, I might very well add. There, there was a UN-
I just want to clarify this item for future agenda. You don't need to clarify the reason why, please.
Okay. So in that case, I would urge the city council of Pinole to adopt a resolution proclamation along the lines of the proclamation that the city of Aspen adopted in support of Ukraine at a future meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
The next comment is from Cordell Hindler. Go ahead.
Yes, can you hear me okay, Heather?
We can hear you fine. Thank you.
Yeah, can you hear me okay?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, okay. So, good evening, Mayor Salimi, council. My name is Cordell Hindler, and I'm a Richmond resident. I have two items for your consideration to be placed on a future agenda. Number one is to revisit the budget item, because I feel that this is very important, because in the long term, if Pinole is going to like, you know, get back on good graces, you know, financially. That's for the April 5th meeting, possibly. But also for the 19th of April, I was thinking that if the council would be interested in having Sabrina Landry to provide an update in regarding on how COVID has impacted, you know, the parks and in the Bay Area. So I would ask that the council would consider inviting Ms. Landry to, to come for, for the 19th of April, and that's it.
The last comment is from Irma Rupert. Go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can hear you fine. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor, council staff and public. Two things, Mayor. I'm glad to hear that the animal shelter will be agendized. I did request that way back when, and I appreciate it. Thank you for the, for the future agenda item date. Secondly, I spoke to Supervisor Joya. He has a videotape about Fire Station 74, and I was speaking to him, and is it possible we can put his videotape on the TV station?
I'm sorry, this is a request for future item agenda at this moment.
Okay. Mayor, I, my request is to bring the chief or supervisor bringing us an update on Fire Station 74. He's got a video out, and he would be available in putting it on our TV station. That's, that's my request.
Thank you, ma'am. City Manager, Mary, we, I do believe we have a fire chief coming back to the council within the next month or so to make the presentation, correct?
That's correct. It's at one of the two April meetings. Chief Weinkopf will be providing an update on the, some of the changes that have been made at the fire station, as well as an update on the progress and negotiations with Confire about greater collaboration.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am. Ms. Rupert. Any other comments?
That concludes the public comments.
Thank you, Madam City Manager. That concludes item seven D. Then I move on to item seven E. City Manager report. Please go ahead, sir.
Yeah, briefly. Great to be back in person with everybody. Wonderful reception. Nice to see members of the community. Just want to provide you, you and the community with an update. City staff provided the council with memo on youth commissions that had been requested at a past council meeting, and just want to provide a preview of some agenda items for our next council meetings. As you all know, we're going to have a special city council meeting next Thursday, which is going to be looking at, discussing the updates to the general plan we're working on, to housing, health and safety, and environmental justice. The following Tuesday, we'll have another special city council meeting that's going to focus on the city's revenue stream and local taxes in particular. And then at our next regular meeting on April 5th, we'll have a presentation by the new Contra Costa College president, a report on activities of our Public Works Maintenance Division, an update on our building permit process and customer service, the annual progress report on the general plan, consideration of a letter of support for AB 1944, consideration of a letter of support for the United Steelworkers, and updates to our contract for our Tracket Land Use Planning software system, the second read, potentially of the fireworks ordinance we're hearing on first reading tonight, and update on PCTV, and also presentation of our five-year IT strategic plan. So just wanted everybody to know about the items that are slated for our next regular council meeting. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you, sir.
Mayor, quick question.
Please go ahead.
City Manager Murray, I just wanted to make sure we can clarify that I think you meant Tuesday for the next meetings. I think we heard Thursday. I heard Thursday at least.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can you just clarify for the public?
Yes. Sorry. We will have a special city council meeting next Tuesday, also the following Tuesday, and then we'll have a, back to a regular council meeting on April 5th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item seven F. City Attorney report. Good evening, sir.
Thank you, Mayor Salimi. Just briefly wanted to mention that we have our next municipal code update subcommittee meeting on Monday, March 21st. On the agenda for the meeting will be an update to the city's encroachment permit ordinance for city right of ways. I want to thank staff members Misha Carr and Sanjay Mishra for their work on that and their collaboration. And I also want to mention we'll have on the agenda an ordinance and policy update to comply with AB 486, which is going to provide a policy around the city's use, funding, acquisition, and, and use of military equipment. And that's as defined by the Assembly Bill. That's scheduled to come to the city council on April 19th, because we need to get that in place before June 1st. I want to thank Chief Gang and his team for his collaboration and work on that. And that concludes my report.
Thank you, sir. That concludes item seven F. Madam City Clerk, any comments?
No comments. Thank you.
Thank you. I would then move on to items eight B. Presentations. And tonight, we'll have a presentation from Director Wallen about the overview of recent housing legislation by, or Director Wallen, as well as Assistant City Attorney Mog. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, council members, and members of the public. I am Lily Wayland, your Community Development Director, and I'm happy to be here this evening with Assistant City Attorney Alex Mog, updating the council on recent and relevant housing legislation. And if I could ask, PCTV, are you able to run my slide, our slideshow this evening? Thank you. Excellent. Great. So this topic is especially timely as the city is embarking on an update to a number of our general plan elements, the housing element included. And although we will not be focusing on any particular development proposal tonight or an application tonight, the city has experienced a number of large development applications that are making their way through the entitlement process, and the information we'll be presenting this evening is relevant for all new housing projects in the city of Pinole. Next slide, please. So, but first, some background. Next slide, please. Since 1969, California has required that all local governments adequately plan to meet the housing needs of everyone in their community. Jurisdictions meet this requirement by adopting housing plans as a part of their general plan, and general plans serve as the local government's blueprint for how the city and or county will grow and develop. And they also cover a variety of topics, including land use, transportation, conservation, noise, open space, safety, and housing. The role of the general plan is supreme and provides broad policy direction related to land use. The city of Pinole last comprehensively updated our general plan in 2010, and we're beginning the process of updating our housing element along with our health and safety element, and introducing a new element related to environmental justice this year. The broad policies in the general plan are implemented through a variety of tools, and one tool is called a specific plan, which establishes a link between implementing policies of the general plan and the individual development proposals in a specific and well-defined area. The city of Pinole adopted the three corridor specific plan in 2010, and the purpose of the specific plan is to facilitate revitalization of the San Pablo Avenue, the Pinole Valley Road, and the Apian Way commercial corridors. The zoning ordinance is another tool that is used to implement the policies of the general plan, where the general plan sets forth long-term policies that guide future development. The zoning ordinance implements general plan policies via detailed development regulations such as specific use types and building standards like height setbacks, parking, landscaping, maximum, minimum number of residential units, and how affordable they must be. Although the purpose and intent of zoning is different from the general plan, state law requires that zoning be consistent with maps and policies in the general plan. Next slide, please. So when we're talking about housing, it's important to understand the concept of density. Density is the number of developed residential units in a specific area of land and is expressed as the number of dwelling units per acre. The visuals on this slide here show the same acre of property with different housing types from one dwelling unit on the acre of land up to 50 dwelling units per acre. This range of densities is allowed in Pinole depending on the land use designation. Next slide, please. This slide shows the general plan land use map for Pinole. The following slide will show a breakdown by percentage of total acreage for each land use category. Note in particular on this map the areas which are yellow, orange, red, dark blue, and light green. They are all areas where housing is currently allowed in some capacity and at different densities in Pinole. Next slide, please. So the pie chart on the left-hand side of the screen shows the breakdown of land use designations in Pinole by percentage of acres in Pinole. Of note, about 19% of land is in Pinole is designated for open space and parks and recreation, but 7% is in the Bay as the San Pablo Bay Conservation Area. About 3% is designated as public or institutional use, and 2% is regional commercial. About 15% of the land in Pinole is designated as a roadway or for transportation use. The remaining 54% is designated to allow some level of housing. The bar chart at the right of the screen here shows a detail of the breakdown of land use designations that allow for housing in Pinole so that how that 54% is made up. Each land use designation has a range of density that is allowed. The majority of the land that allows for housing is, in Pinole is our designated suburban residential designation, which is about 31% of the land area in Pinole and was yellow on the general plan map. And this designation allows for up to 10 units of housing per acre of land. At 11% of the land area in Pinole, our rural land use designation is the lowest density allowed and allows for up to 0.2 dwelling units per acre, or that's one dwelling unit per every five acres. Our mixed-use subarea encompasses 5% of the total land area. It allows for a mix of commercial and residential uses at up to 50, 50 units per acre. Low density, high density, and our old town and service subareas are all up to, are all 1% of the land area in Pinole and range in allowed densities from 0.2 to 50 units per acre. Next slide, please. So in order to visualize these densities in the community, this slide shows the variety of land use designations that allow housing in Pinole with aerial photos of the existing built conditions in Pinole, some just examples of some areas in Pinole that are designated, that particular designation. And you can see that as the density increases, the building intensity also increases and also takes different forms. Next slide, please. This table provides a snapshot of the new housing units that were in, that were in the process of approvals and constructions in the calendar year 2021. We issued planning approvals for three accessory dwelling units, or ADUs, two single-family homes, and 212 multifamily units. Building permits were issued in 2021 for one single-family home and three ADUs, and the city also issued permits, or we also finalized construction for two new single-family homes in 2021. Next slide, please. Another key background component of housing is what it means to provide affordable housing. Affordable housing is restricted to sale or rent at prices that are affordable to households with incomes no greater than certain levels, and these levels are based off of the area median income, which is recalculated on an annual basis and varies by county. Next slide, please. In Contra Costa County, the area median income, or AMI for short, for a family of four in 2021 was $125,600. For a rental unit, the tenant's housing cost, which is rent and utilities, cannot exceed a set value if it's affordable. And for ownership affordable units, there's a cap on the resale price to ensure continued affordability. It's also deed restrictions that lay out specific requirements that will be reported against the property, and the amount of time the property must be made available as an affordable housing resource. The table on this screen shows income limits by household size and income category, as well as maximum affordable monthly gross rents by bedroom size for different households in 2021. For example, a low-income two-bedroom apartment unit would have a maximum rent cap as an affordable unit of about $1,700 per month. I will now hand the presentation off to Assistant City Attorney Mog, who will be briefing the council on relevant state housing legislation.
Thank you very much, Lily. Good evening, Mayor, council members. Dave, if you could go to the next slide. And before we jump into discussing some of the laws, I just want to let the council know that this is just an overview of these laws. You know, some of these laws are pretty detailed and extensive, and we're just going to talk about sort of the, the top-level takeaways. I'm sure, as you all are aware, you know, the legislature has adopted a number of laws intended to, in their minds, address the housing crisis in California. Some of the laws we'll talk about tonight are, are new and have been adopted in the last few years. Some of the laws we'll talk about have actually been in effect for some time, but are being used more and more in recent years by housing advocates or developers. So the first law we're going to talk about is the density bonus law. Next slide, please. So the way the density bonus law works is developers who build a certain percentage of affordable units in a project are entitled to a so-called density bonus that allows them to build more, have a higher density than what would otherwise be allowed under the city's, you know, general plan and zoning. So as an example, if the city's rules, its zoning codes, say that a density for a parcel is 20 units an acre, and the developer receives a 10% density bonus, that developer would be able to have a, a project with a density of 22 units an acre. They'd be legally entitled to that, even though the city's rules normally would cap that at 20 units an acre. The greater the percentage of affordable units, the larger the density bonus is, and also the greater- And also, the greater the affordability of the units, the larger the density bonuses. So if the units are low-income, the density bonus will be less than if the units are very low, you know, reserved for very low-income individuals. And something to note is that inclusionary units, so units that developers require to provide by the city's inclusionary zoning ordinance, count towards the develop towards the density bonus. So Pinole has an ordinance that requires developers to provide fifteen percent of the units as affordable. There are some way they can often pay a fee or build those units off-site, but if they build the units, which is what is the main requirement of our ordinance, those fifteen percent count towards a density bonus. And as you see, that will automatically get them a density bonus under the state density bonus law. So next slide, please. So just by way of an example, this is a simplified version of the chart. But you can see if we're talking solely about low-income units. And low-income units are units that have to be reserved for eighty percent or lower of the area median income. If ten percent of the units in a project are set aside for low-income households, then the developer is entitled to twenty percent density bonus. And as that percentage of units increases, that the density bonus increases as well, up to the point where developers can get, you know, up to a very high percentage, almost, you know, double the the normal rate. And the normal density. Next slide, please. So in addition to density bonus, you know, actual bonus in a density, qualifying projects are also entitled to receive something called incentives. And they can receive up to four incentives based on their the level of affordability. So just like we saw before, there's a chart that, you know, determines the bonus. A similar, there's a similar structure for incentives where the more affordable units you have, the more incentives you're allowed to. And then the cent in, excuse me, an incentive is a reduction in any site development standard or a modification of any zoning code or design requirement. So this could be an elimination of architectural style or a height limit or a amenity requirement. So for example, if a project, if the city's code says that every unit needs to have, you know, twenty-five square feet of private outdoor space, you know, like a balcony, a developer could use one of their incentives to get rid of that entire requirement. And the city is required to grant that incentive unless it finds that the proposed incentive does not result in cost reductions for the process project. And that's a very extremely difficult standard to meet because, you know, for example, I just gave, you know, of course, not having to provide balcony would would result in cost savings for a project. So the other way an incentive can be denied, and this is both for the density bonus itself and for a requested incentive, the only way the city can deny that is if the density bonus or the incentive would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety for which there is no method to mitigate that specific adverse impact. And state law, it's not up to the city to decide what a specific adverse impact is on a case-by-case basis. State law says that a specific adverse impact is a quantifiable, direct, and unavoidable impact based on objective identified written policies or identified written health or safety standards, policies, or conditions that exist at the time that the project is submitted. So a city can't decide on a case-by-case basis what is going to be considered a, you know, a specific adverse impact. It needs to have those adverse impacts need to be, you know, quantifiable. They need to be direct, unavoidable, and they need to be based on written and adopted policies. So it's very unusual that a project, a city is able to deny a project or density bonus because of of this standard. And courts have consistently held that, you know, cities have essentially no discretion to deny a density bonus. So the next slide, please. If this, if it, if, as if that was not enough, density bonus projects are also entitled to waive any development standard that would physically prevent the project from being built at the densities allowed. So this is a little different than a concession. A concession you can use for for anything. But on top of that, once you use those your concessions, a developer is also entitled to waive any development standard that would physically prevent the project from being built at the permitted density. So for example, if a developer is entitled to build a project at a hundred units an acre, but the city has a height limit of ten feet, you know, it's impossible to build a hundred units with a ten, an acre with a ten-foot height limit. So state law entitles the developer to waive that height limit to the extent that is necessary to build the units. And finally, density bonus projects are also subject to special parking requirements. Without having to use a concession or a waiver, the city cannot require a density bonus project to have more than one parking space for a one-bedroom unit and more than one-point-five parking spaces for two to three-bedroom unit. And there are some additional requirements for a hundred percent affordable projects. And the council may have seen this in action before. The council may remember that eight-eleven San Pablo project, they use density bonus is to reduce parking and other things. The Vista Woods, a hundred percent senior affordable project, that used density bonuses, you know, among other things, to reduce setback requirements. So there have, there have been projects in the city that have used density bonus law before, but it's, you know, it's becoming more and more common. Next slide, please. So the next law we're going to talk about is the Housing Accountability Act. Next slide, please. This is a law that's been on the books for a while, but is becoming used more and more by developers. So the Housing Accountability Act says that a city cannot disapprove a housing project, it can't deny a housing project, or decrease the proposed density. So, you know, it can't deny the project or approve it at a lower density than it's proposed if the project complies with all of the city's applicable objective standards. And we're talking about what an objective standard is in is in a minute, but the city cannot deny the project if it complies with all of the city's applicable objective standards. And the law requires, say, to make that determination relatively quickly, as quickly as thirty days for smaller projects. And the city can still impose conditions on projects that are subject to this law, but those projects can't make the, those conditions can't make the project infeasible, either physically or in many cases financially. So you, you know, the city couldn't require as a condition that there be, you know, gold-plated bathrooms, you know, as an extreme, extreme example. But many other things will have similar conditions, you know, extending a, you know, requiring a bigger setback could make a project infeasible, you know, because it just becomes difficult to fit the project on the site, for example. And and these are the objective standards that are in place at a time that a complete preliminary application is submitted. So next slide, please. So what is an objective standard? An objective standard is a standard that involves no personal or subjective judgment and is uniformly verifiable. So a height limit, we can all go out and we can say, I'll measure a building and everyone should get the same result. You know, if the city has a height limit of thirty feet, everyone should be able to measure a proposed building and say, yes, it's more than thirty feet or less than thirty feet. Subjective standards involve personal discretion, you know, personal opinion. And different people might have different opinions as to what, whether that standard is met or not. So, you know, the classic examples would be, you know, does that project conform with the neighborhood character? Or does it use similar materials to surrounding buildings? Or to use the height example again, a requirement that a building be similar in height to surrounding buildings is subjective. Some people might think a building that's ten feet taller is similar enough in height, you know? Whereas other people might think that's not true. So those are subjective standards. So projects that comply with objective standards cannot be denied. And one thing to note on this law is that if a densely, if a project is using a density bonus, and so it's not, you know, let's say it has a concession to get rid of, to not comply with one of the city's objective standards, it still is considered in compliance for the purposes of the Housing Accountability Act, as long as the only non-conformity is due to the use of the density bonus. So next slide, please. So in this case, the city can only deny the project or approve it at a lower density if it demonstrates with a preponderance of evidence that the project would have a specific adverse impact upon the public health or safety. This is the same standard that we just talked about with density bonus law. It's a, it's a very difficult standard to meet. Violation, you could possibly be subject to ten thousand dollars a unit. And there have been a lot of recent court cases, you know, emphasizing the strictness of the Housing Accountability Act as applied to development projects. You know, the city of, recently, there was a, I guess, a major case out of the city of San Mateo where they had denied the project because they thought the setbacks weren't sufficient. The court, they they lost and they lost on appeal. And ultimately, they had to approve the project. And in addition, they ended up having to pay, you know, about, I think, five hundred thousand dollars in attorney's fees to the developer's attorney, to the developer to pay for that. Not to mention whatever the city's own cost would be. So the, the, you know, violating this law can potentially have significant repercussions. Next slide, please. So SB thirty-five, this is, in fact, one of the recent bills we're talking about tonight. Next slide, please. And what this law does is it allows for streamlined ministerial approvals of multifamily residential projects that satisfy certain requirements. So what a streamlined ministerial approval means is it's a staff-level decision. This, it's not allowed to go to a, you know, city council or plan commission for review or approval. It's approved ministerially. And that also means no conditions can be added to it. The pro, if a project meets, satisfies all the requirements, it has to be approved. No, no conditions can be added to the project except for conditions that are, you know, comply with objectives established standards. So this project, we're talking about how a project qualifies for SB thirty-five, but this applies in cities that have issued fewer building permits than their share of regional housing needs, you know, have are not meeting their RENA obligations by income category. So this applies in Pinole and in basically every city in California, only a very small. I think the last time I checked, it was like ten or twelve cities out of four hundred and fifty have met their RENA obligations and so are exempt from this law. Next slide, please. So projects that are, you know, may have left this out of one of the slides or may have gone deleted, but the the main way, the primary way you qualify for SB thirty-five is that you have to be first and foremost, meet all of the city's objective standards. So those same objective standards we talked about, all projects in order to qualify for SB thirty-five, you have to meet all of those standards. And then there are some additional standards that state law requires. So for projects larger than ten units, you have to provide a certain percentage of affordable housing. It has to be either ten percent for low income or twenty percent for moderate income, which would be a hundred and twenty percent AMI. If a city has met its RENA obligation for producing above-moderate income units, then at least fifty percent of the units have to be affordable. So if a city has already produced enough above-moderate income units, sort of market-rate units, then in order to qualify for SB thirty-five, the project has to provide a lot of affordable units in order to qualify. Pinole currently does not meet, is not meeting its above-moderate income units, but there may be a time in the future, you know, during the next RENA cycle where it would meet that requirement. Next slide, please. So these projects have to be on sites that are zone for residential. They can be mixed-use projects as long as two-thirds of the projects are residential, at least as long as two-thirds of the square footage of the project is residential. Like I mentioned, the projects must comply with objective zoning and design standards. And they have to meet certain other standards that are laid out in state law. So they can't be in certain areas like high severity fire zones. They can't, the projects have to pay prevailing wage. The developers have to pay prevailing wage on the projects. And there's a number of requirements like that. Next slide, please. And like we saw with the Housing Accountability Act, there's a quick turnaround for staff to review the bill. Here to review and the, not the bill, but the proposed project and identify any conflicts. And if the staff does not identify the conflicts for SB thirty-five within the required timeframe, it's deemed compliant. And then final approval has to happen very quickly. And because this is a ministerial process, SEQA does not apply. So no environmental review is required because SEQA only applies when the city is making a discretionary, taking a discretionary action. So there have no, not been any applications in Pinole for an SB thirty-five project at this time, but just wanted the city council to be aware of of this law. You're seeing more and more of these applications in neighboring jurisdictions. Next slide, please. So the last law we're going to talk about is SB nine, which was, just went into effect on January first of this year, and and the council and the public may have heard some media reports about this law. Next slide, please. So what this law requires is the city to ministerially approve without a hearing a two-lot subdivision and/or the development of two units on single-family lots that meet certain criteria. So this is only for lots in single-family residential zones. And and so it's on single-family lots and they have to meet certain criteria. But if they do, it's possible that they could have both a two-unit, a two-lot subdivision and develop two units on each lot. So what is now a one, a single-family home could potentially be four, four-plus units at some point in the future. Next slide, please. So SB nine units are prohibited in certain areas, wetlands, earthquake fault zones, fi, high-fire severity zones as determined based on state maps. But for all of these sensitive areas, there are exceptions. So for example, for high-fire severity zones, if the sites meet certain fire hazard mitigation measures, you know, provides for unhardening, it can still go through with an SB nine project. Next slide, please. And the law does include certain anti-displacement requirements. So SB nine projects can't proceed if they would result in the demolition or alteration of any deed-restricted affordable housing. Or alteration of any deed restricted affordable housing, or housing that has been used as residential in the last. Um, fifteen years or was occupied by a tenant in the last three years. Um. Uh, and we don't have rent control in, in Pinole, but if we did, it would also couldn't be. Used to eliminate any rent control of the units. Uh, next slide please. So when you're using a, creating a two lot subdivision, the law does create certain minimum requirements. So. Each lot has to be a minimum of twelve hundred square feet and each lot must be um. Forty percent of the original lot size. So for a five thousand square foot. Um, lot, that means the smaller lot has to be at least two thousand square feet. Um, in order to be at least forty percent of the original lot. Once a lot is subdivided once through SB nine, it can't be subdivided again. And um. Adjacent parcels can only be subdivided if the owners are independent from each other. So if the same person. Uh, owns two parcels next door to each other, they can't subdivide both parcels. Uh, next slide please. Uh, local agencies, you know, as part of a subdivision, they can require, make sure there's easements to have. Access to the public right of way and for, you know, utilities, but they can't otherwise require a dedication of. Right of way or to construct offsite improvements, or things that we would. Normally, the city would normally be able to require for a large scale subdivision. You know, we haven't had one of those in, in Pinole. Recently, but normally when you do a large scale subdivision, you can require, you know, uh, right of way dedication or. For certain offsite improvements. Um, next slide please. Um, the city can, uh, for the units that are built through SB nine, the city can adopt objective standards. Um, as long, and, and can enforce its normal objective standards, as long as those. Um, standards first, um. Can't require setback of more than four feet in the rear and side yards. Um, and also. The standards cannot physically prevent eight hundred square feet units from being built. So if the application of the city's normal standards for lot coverage and, and other things like that. Uh, prevent eight hundred square foot units, the city can't enforce them to the extent they. Provide an eight hundred square foot unit. So if it's, you know, if the city had a fifty percent lot coverage requirement. It might have to decrease that lot coverage requirement to forty-five percent in order to allow an eighty, eight hundred square foot unit. Next slide please. Um, the law does prohibit units created from SB nine as you, being used for short term. Rentals, there, there will be deed restrictions recorded on the property. Um, and when a lot split occurs, an owner needs to record a deed restriction saying it is their intent. Just their intent um, to occupy one of the units as their principal residence for three years. But other than that, the city can't require any owner occupancy requirements for the units. Uh, next slide please. And there's also restrictions on how much parking the city can require, essentially a maximum of one parking space, except. No parking required if near a um, major. High quality transit corridor or a major transit stop. Um, right now, though there are. No major transit stops or high quality um, transit quarters in Pinole. But that could change in the future depending on, you know, if Westcat adjusts bus schedules or things like that, it's possible in the future. There, there could be, um, those could exist um, in Pinole. Next slide please. And um, local agency, as, as the council may remember, you know, there's already requirements for states to ministerially approve. ADU. So there's a question of can you do both of these things, an ADU and a, and use SB nine? And the answer is, uh, there are some limitations. So if you take a single family home and you subdivide it. And you build two, uh, you, two units on one of those lots, you can't also build an ADU on that lot. So you can't. You know, build three units on what was maybe previously on a new unit, on a new subdivided lot. So you can't have six units, you know, you're not going to be able to create six units on a single, what was once a single family lot. Uh, next slide please. So um, just some additional factors to consider, um, SB nine does not. You know, it regulates local authority, it regulates the city's authority, it doesn't preempt HOA rules or, you know, CCNRS. Um, those are private agreements between property owners, so the city does not enforce those. But um, SB nine does not overrule those. Um. And also the scope and the impact of law may be limited just because of physical constraints and financial constraints. Um, you know, for example, uh, property owners are already able to build, you know. ADUs on their property of, uh, you know, twelve hundred square feet, a thousand squi- uh, square feet in the city. Uh, and have limited fees because of state law. And so. There may not be an incentive to, for them to go through this process where they have to um. Pay normal fees and, and comply with other things. Um, we've, there's certain, I think there's been someone who's expressed interest in the city. But no applications yet, and there weren't, as you saw from earlier in the presentation. The city in the past hasn't received lots of ADU applications. Um, so it may similarly not receive a lot of SB nine applications, that's yet to be determined, but I think. Throughout the Bay Area, um, I think it's safe, it's fair to say that there hasn't been a flood of SB nine applications. There are. Some, um, I saw a report, you know, for example, from the city of Oakland, that so far they've only received one application. Um, and obviously, you know, every city is different and with time there will be more applications, but I just wanted to provide some context on how. How much this law is being used. Uh, next slide please. So with that, um, that is the end of the presentation. There was a lot of material from, from both Lily and I. Um, and so we are of course happy to answer any questions the council may have.
Thank you, sir. It was a, a lot of information, SB thirty-five, SB nine, bonus density, parking restriction, ADU, plus ST. Nine and CCRs and issue, uh, rules, I guess. Um, I will um, want to thank you first of all, but. For anybody who looks at all that information at once, unless you are familiar with those rules and regulations, impossible for somebody to just digest everything in. In one hour. Uh, would it be possible to distribute it and put it on our website, this presentation, so that anybody can actually read it? In detail and come back with additional questions. But I would like to do it, I would like the council to please. Combine the comments and questions into two. Uh, combine question and comments. I would not have a section for question and not a section for comments, but. I just would like to limit questions to two per council member. Council member Terry, please go ahead.
So, I, I have way more questions than two, but I will do my best to um, get that to the city manager and attorney. Uh, one of them. I've already asked, but um, privately with the city manager. When, eh, eh, oh, sorry about that. Um, when we look at housing. Uh, it's obvious, state of California wants housing, our residents, people want housing, but. The ADU was kind of that R one expansion, right? So I mean, right now it's kind of like going. Um. There are some cities that use a community benefits uh, program. To work with the developer to build a bike path or build. Uh, a, a, a digital sign or, you know, have requirements to meet with, with the unions before the project goes on. I'm wondering, does ci- does city of Pinole have that kind of mechanism? Cause we saw a lot of things we can't do, right? Um, I'm just wondering, is there any kind of give back from the developers as to how we can address some of the other issues we might have? To balance the influx of housing. I mean, we all know we need it. You know, kids are moving back into the homes, ADUs are, are slowly coming in Pinole, but I would venture to guess there's a lot more ADUs out there. Which leads to my second question. Are the amnesty rules still in, in, applying? Or is that something that somebody who's built it has to go back or apply for the permit? So two questions. One, does a computer, uh, community benefits ordinance. Work to the city's favor to start to imply, or apply some type of benefit coming back to the city? Obviously, housing's a benefit, but, but there are other impacts. Um, and then two, is the amnesty program still, still active? Please go ahead.
Yeah, thank, thank you, council members. So I, I guess the answer to the second um. Question about ADU amnesty, that is still um, possible under state law. Um, so that someone with a currently illegal ADU could. Um, come in, you know, to legalize it now without penalty. I, I believe, I don't remember off the top of my head, but I think that lasted. Twenty twenty-four, um, or, or around there under, under state law. Um, and regarding your first que- uh, question, when the city. Um, if the city is going to impose requirements on projects, um. There are requirements in state law and under the uh, federal constitution that the requirements have to be. There needs to be a nexus between the project and the requirement, and also, um. It has to be roughly proportional to what the city is trying to, what the prod, the impacts of the project. So for example. Um, we have a requirement, and most cities have a requirement, that projects improve the frontage. In front of the, you know, the frontage of the project, you know. If the sidewalk's not already there, they have to improve. Um, the, the sidewalk and the um, curb in, in front of the street, cause there's a nexus between the project. And it's reasonably related. Um, what it becomes harder for us to these to require is. Um, something more than that, um, generally for most projects. Um, where you see cities being able to negotiate a lot more extensive. Um, community benefits, um, is when the project needs something from the city. So for example, it, it needs, needs some sort of discretionary approval from the city. So for example. If the um, developer was seeking a development agreement from the city, the city would then be in a, you know, a strong position to. Uh, negotiate additional things as part of that development agreement. Or if the city was seeking some other type, if the project was seeking some other type of, um. A discretionary approval from the city, you know, maybe a use permit or a subdivision map. Um, then the city would have more basis to, um. You know, require those community benefits. But when a project complies with the. A city's objective zoning standards, the city has already said, this is what you have to do to build this project. Um, if someone meets all those standards, then it becomes um, hard, you know, very difficult for a city to require anything. More. Um, and the standards that the city has adopted. Um, you know, need to be, there needs to be a nexus between what the city is requiring and, and. What the developer is required to do. So for example, you know, when we do impact fees, we, we undertake, you know, extensive studies. To determine what the impact of the project is so that there is support for the amount of the fee that's, that's being charged to that developer. Um, so that was a long answer. Hopefully I um, got at what you were asking.
Yeah, I mean, I have more questions, but I'm sure the other council members have them. I'll just direct them to the city manager and, and get a report back. Thank you.
This is a very important and uh, subject, and I'm, I'm sure the council could, could have just a special meeting just to go through all those rules and regulation. And just having it right now tonight, we'd have to con- con- concentrate everything, but. Uh, if needs is there, we can request a special agenda meeting for that item. Mayor Potem, Murphy, please go ahead.
Sure. Um, I also want to just say I look forward to us discussing this and hopefully bringing this into conversation at our. Future, at a future meeting, maybe even next week. So, um, I think this would be a great opportunity. So I am, um, first of all, thank you Assistant City Attorney Alex Maga for this presentation, very informative. Incredibly helpful, and I definitely hope we can share some of these slides with the public. I am very interested in really what I see as a cultural phenomenon around housing. Oftentimes what happens in, whether it's a city or a state or a nation, is we see change. And what we see, when we see change is sometimes folks respond to change with fear, some folks respond to change with hope. And so as we think about this conversation around housing and whether or not there is a housing crisis and the need for housing in our cities. I'm really interested in how as a city, we can come to terms with both the realization. Um, of new laws like S, you know, the Housing Accountability Act as well as SB nine. But also make it so that some of our members of the public understand a little bit more about the needs. Um, both of the people who may be coming into our community, but also in terms of the needs for um, housing to be a benefit, a community benefit to our community. So I'm really interested in SB nine because I think it, it was pretty much a national dialogue. I think it received, you know. New York Times articles and certainly uh, was a conversation of this council. So. Um, to, to synthesize, I have two questions. Um, first of all, I want to know what is considered a car share vehicle program, which was outlined in one of the slides in the latter. Piece of your presentation, but my larger question, um, for you as well as Director Wayland is. I'm curious as to what type of incentive programs or community development programs cities are doing. To encourage more housing or SB nine applications. Um, a lot of the times we are, you know, fighting new laws. I'm wondering how might we create, or how are other cities creating programs? And efforts to really, again, connect the dots on what are new laws and potentially find ways for both the community to benefit. And also developers as they come in.
Eh, yeah, um, and Lily may be able to add um, something here too, but I think what I've seen cities do to try to incentivize housing. Is um, provide, you know, fee waivers, for example, um, for certain things. Um, or, you know, this is for ADUs, but it might apply in the. Uh, uh, SB nine context as well as a, you know, the city sort of preparing pre-approved plans. That a, you know, for two or three model ADUs that, um. Members of the public can use, and that way members of the public don't have to hire, you know, an architect or an engineer or that sort of thing to prepare plans. Um, I've also s- seen some cities um, create incentives in their regulations. To get the type of units that they want. So, um, you know, under. ADU laws, you know, the city could limit, uh, one, you know, ADU to, or one bedroom ADU to, you know. Eight hundred and fifty square feet. Uh, they can't be more than four feet setbacks. Um, I've seen things where a city would say, well, if you have more than four feet setbacks. Um, you know, if you, if your project has ten feet setbacks, then we'll allow you to build an ADU that's, you know. Bigger than what our normal requirement is. So, um, trying to incentivize types of units that. You know, this, the city or community thinks are preferable. Um, Lily, I don't know if you have any.
Sure, yeah, it's a, it's a great question. And um, I think what I would offer is that. When we're, we're about to kick off our housing element update here, and a part of that process is really understanding. The community's needs. And so we'll be polling the community, um, and surveying them on their needs. What is difficult in Pinole in particular with regards to housing? What their needs are and what would be helpful um, in the future for them, for. Everyone in Pinole to be able to have safe and affordable housing. We'll also be polling stakeholders as well, so. Um, develop affordable housing developers and folks who promote affordable housing. To ask them what are the sticking points, particularly in Pinole, and um, what, you know, they would offer. As um, incentives that the city could offer in order to make the development of housing a little bit easier for them.
If possible, if possible, Director Wayland, it'd be great to have some ideas for a future meeting for us to um, explore. I think, again, I think I'm, I'm challenged with this idea of like. Wh- what our community needs and what we simply don't know we need to. Because there's so many ideas out there and there may be opportunities that we're missing out on to invest in. Um, again, community development programs or even incentives. For example, especially with the new law like SB nine that we're just not aware of here. Uh, maybe that our public is not aware of. So this could be a great opportunity to really educate, hopefully us as a council. Um, but as well as even, you know, those members of the public who may be concerned about. You know, new people coming into our community due to some of these new laws. Um, I think we need to build the bridge. So thank you again for your presentation. That's all, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Potem. Uh, Council Member Toms, please go ahead.
Sure, um, couple of questions, and the the one I'm going to start with is on the density bonus. Um, you mentioned that um, you know, there's four incentives that we um that a developer can request, and those incentives are typically relaxation or deviation of zoning standards. What about um, could one of those incentives be a relaxation of a general plan or specific plan policy?
Y- y- yes, um, councilmember. So, it's a relaxation of any development standard. So, if a, there's a development standard or, you know, a some sort of policy in the general plan or a specific plan about how a project, you know, what a project needs, that um could be relaxed as well, using an incentive.
Okay, and we don't have any discretion on whether or not we want to relax? I mean, is, it's basically whatever the developer is requesting?
Cor- correct, and unless we can make those findings um of a specific and unavoidable adverse impact based on, you know, quantifiable, objective, you know, written policies and standards, um, unless we can make that finding, the city cannot deny the concession.
Okay, and then uh my second question relates to the uh SB nine units. So, if you have a single-family residence that could be subdivided by SB nine, and then each of those two, two units can then have an accessory dwelling unit, so you go from one unit to four, what do we do about impact fees, for instance, um sewer fees? Uh, can we still collect all of the, the standard development fees?
Y- yes, so there, nothing in the law limits the city's ability to collect um those fees at this time. So, you know, that's a significant, um, it may be why we haven't seen as many applications. The city can and would, you know, unless the council directed otherwise, um, continue to charge, you know, those full fees. I I would just note that, you know, it would not surprise me if the legislature changed that in the future. You know, a similar thing happened with ADUs where they adopted um an ADU law, then they got feedback from, you know, interested parties that city ADU fee, you know, impact fees on ADUs were limiting uh the development of ADUs. And they, the legislature came back and um amended the law to, you know, severely restrict the impact fees cities could charge for ADUs. They have not done that yet with, with, for SB nine projects. And so, you know, the city would continue to charge its full uh impact fees and connection fees and all of those fees to SB nine projects for each unit.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez, who been?
Thank you. No, I, I'm just absorbing much of this um a- as, as good um as there may, as good as it may be to um have additional housing, it doesn't get past me that um very, the, you know, the current legislation is very much pro-development without necessarily considering the impacts um on local government. And among those impacts certainly is to, to have enough housing to accommodate its population, no doubt about that, but as well um related effects. And um I, I, for one, think um that there needs to be a lot of work done, not just by this council, but all around, evidently, by different legislators to balance um all that they are requiring with um, or that, all that the laws allow as requirements and or as exemptions, to balance that with um also providing um support and funding um to facilitate not only the, the, the building of structures, the land use, the building of housing, but as well um amenities that go with that uh without sacrificing the quality um of, of life um surrounding those new developments and then the remain, the rest of the city. It's very much a pro-development uh set of legislation that we're seeing. Uh, no doubt, uh because of the population shifts, I understand that. Um, there is a lack of, of the other piece, I think, big, big, big piece um to allow to, to allow that housing to be um certainly top-notch, as well as um supplementing all around in, in very beneficial way. Everything, everything else that surrounds it. I, I just, I'm, I'm flummoxed, I really am. It's really very, very, very eye-opening, as well as um interesting to see this again and again, this meaning a presentation about, about current housing law. And the shift that we're seeing here, and I, I, I can, I'm, I'm left with thinking it's no wonder people move away from, from certain areas that are increasingly denser. And, and I, I'm hopeful that um, that in the studies or the, the surveys or the inquiries that um our city will do to find out the needs of its current population, um, that we're also taking into consideration the, the different life stages that um respondents would have, or the questions that are being posed about their needs, because there definitely is, uh, are, are different interests across the lives, lifespan. And as exciting as change is, um, we've got, you know, a po- a population that includes both, you know, working and up-and-coming um folks who are looking for housing and need housing that's affordable to them, while we also have um another um set of, of, of people in Penole that are at a point in their lives where their, you know, their, their housing needs may, may be, are going to be different, just going to be different. They're not necessarily going to be looking for something that's, that's a dense, dense environment, as is being described, because, because the state is, is attempting to accommodate for people needing shelter. There is no doubt in my mind that that is a necessity, but there is also no doubt in my mind that we need to balance that with, with so much more. And uh I'm challenged by this notion of trying to come up with um objectivity, uh, you know, and standards beyond those things that can physically be measured. Um, because, i- you know, with, with my background in public health, it's, it's, it's health that we think about. It's the preventive aspects of, of um, you know, what high density might do to an environment that is so um where people live in a structure where um land, open space, for example, may not necessarily be around them. I, I just have to, I, I just have to think about, oh, my goodness, there's so much to, to think about as we proceed with um reviewing applications that come our way. And I'm wondering whether um the Planning Commission has heard um your presentation. Because I think, I know, they, they essentially get a first review of the applications that come down. Maybe, maybe, unless they're ministerially approved, right?
Yeah, a- and Councilwoman, they, they have heard the presentation. They, they heard it in um two parts. Um, and, and I think, so they had a little more time, you know, more time with all of us to, you know, discuss and ask questions than that, than the council will tonight. But they, they have heard um a version of this pre- presentation.
You know, what I, thank you. You know, what I'm left with, not necessarily a question or as a reaction to your presentation, and, and what I've, I'm left to wonder is um, or what I'm left with as a desire, is to hear a comparable presentation of what can be done uh about, about design, about the internal environment. Because here we're talking about land use, right? It's the kind of the external, using, using external environment, but again, thinking about health and safety for people living in such dense environments, what, how do we make them a, a, a wonderful place to live? You know, um, and I'm going to exaggerate, but I, 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 I think about the density that other countries, um, I think of Japan, and such highly dense environments that they live. I think of Asian countries, the highly dense environments that they, that they live in. And I just wonder about, but again, this big life shift that we're seeing, and it's just not Penole, it's, you know, it's, it's global, it's global demographic increases. Thanks for your presentation.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez, who been? Uh, I'm gonna be brief, I have twenty questions. No, 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 I have two. We talked about um, one of the slides, uh, City Attorney, City Attorney, if you can go to, is the percentage of the land in the city of Penole dedicated to a commercial use. I believe it's one of your first slides, I believe it's on slide seven, probably. And that shows that only two percent of the land of Penole is being used for commercial purposes. If you can go to that slide, if you don't mind, I'd like everybody to see it.
I need some help from PCTV to advance the slides here. And, and while they're doing that, uh, Mr. Mayor, I wanted to, um, it's a good question, I wanted to clarify. The percentage that you'll see on the screen here is our regional commercial um designation. So, it's actually on slide, um, I think maybe four or so, it's at the very beginning of the presentation. Yeah, there we go.
Thank you, yes, that, that's one. We see that regional commercial land use is two percent. So, what's, what, what's the percentage of the city that we're using for commercial purposes here?
Sure, so there's other commercial uses that are allowed in the uh service sub-area, the Old Town sub-area, the mixed-use sub-area. Those all allow for commercial use.
Okay, I see mixed use is five percent, okay, it's, it's five percent, and then we have another two percent. My, my, my point, what I'm trying to show here is the major, the majority of our land is dedicated to a residential use, fifty-four percent. Only two percent, somebody might argue with the, your numbers, might be five or two percent. Only two percent is dedicated to a, a revenue maker. Two percent, uh, general fund balance, it's about seventeen million per year. Measure S twenty-six, two thousand six and two thousand fourteen represents individually each of them two million dollars per year. That two percent land represent over a quarter of our revenue. So, next question that would like to ask us is, we talk about hardship and danger, and if we were to uh lose that two percent because we have to build, does this qualify as a hardship? Does this qualify as, potentially, the city can make a case that th- this is a danger for the finance of the city, therefore, we cannot build it? We don't have to answer the question here, but just an open question, and we can work on it. The next comment that I have will be, uh, this is a challenge, but this is also an opportunity for us to move ahead. The nature of uh housing is changing, and probably we should think ahead of the game and redesign our general plan in a sense that we tell them how to build it, and not be stuck in a situation where we have an idea here and there's nothing we can do. If we were to redesign our general plan and know exactly what Penole will be in the next ten to twenty years, in a way that we can integrate all those laws, but still keep the design of what we would like to keep, there'll be, I think, discussion that we should have. That concludes my questions, and I will then open it to the public, please. Madam City Clerk?
Yes, thank you. In person, we have Debbie Long.
Good evening. Um, I hadn't really planned to speak, but it's, uh, you've given me the opportunity. I would request that SB ninety-nine be added to the discussion. Uh, SB ninety-nine has to do with various elements, including a housing element and a safety element for the protection of communities from unreasonable risks associated with the effects of various geological and seismic hazards, flood and wildfires. I want to emphasize wildfires. Uh, it goes on to talk about the fact that there must be um two, let's see, they say, identifying residential developments in hazard areas that do not have at least two emergency evacuation routes. And they must have that as part of their housing element, in not only identifying them, correcting them. Several of you know, I've been up here time after time again about Rancho Road and it being open. Galbraith only has one evacuation area. Rancho Road only has one evacuation area for Rancho Court and North Rancho Place. So, right now, the city is jeopardizing the health of many of its citizens. And I'm sure we're not the only two areas within Penole that are unique to that. There's others. I've talked and talked and talked till I'm blue in the face to the fire chief, and everyone's always in talk. There is absolutely no action. This, we are facing a fire season here very, very certainly. I know that we are a fire hazard area because PG&E has us identified as such. So, I know that we're there. It's not a matter of, oh, are you in a fire hazard? We are in a number-one fire hazard zone. In fact, we are all eligible for generators. I don't know how many of you knew that. They had almost a free generator program. I would ask that this be a part of the agenda when you speak to all the other elements of the housing. Please add SB ninety-nine and talk to your fire chief.
Next speaker is Peter Murray.
Hello, once again, Peter Murray. Um, several of you are on the right track. Um, Norma was talking about, uh, you know, the type of development that's being done, and it should be of a certain quantity and certain quality, rather, and, and to that matter. That's what we tried to do when we expended redevelopment funds on low-income housing here in, uh, in Penole. We didn't build crap. We built good, solid uh homes for, for those and, uh, and made them uh financially available to, to those with low income. This is an age-old activity, um, and we're, we're, we're going through another cycle of it. Uh, in past, they would, they would just build, come in and just, developers would come in and just build anything and then move off and leave the community with the problems. That's why I got involved originally, what, thirty years ago? And it, it just bugged me that they were doing this all across the county. And, and again, it comes down to the people in the community being left to pay for all those problems or administrate them out, one way or another. And then you get the tag of a, you know, in some cases, of being a bad person. And it's not really the case, it's just that these things weren't done appropriately and in the right manner to enhance the community and not be a detriment to the community, like I believe that that development's going to be up at the shopping center there. And I think the mayor's right on the right, right on target with this, uh, you know, you, you, you build the safeguards in so you don't get garbage, you know, in the community. And developers come and developers go. And uh they sit on the beach in Waikiki while we're sitting here trying to figure out how we're going to fight the fires in the, the, on the fifth floor. So, um, and that's how bad it gets. So, uh, in my, my estimation, um, we can hold their feet to the fire. Uh, like I said, uh, you know, previously, um, well, maybe I didn't say it because I didn't get to it in my first part, but it's, um, nobody has the right to build anything. It's a privilege, and they have to earn that privilege. And uh, uh, it's up to the, the planning commissions to uphold the city's standards to these things. And if you can work it the way that the mayor was talking about, building them into it and then holding it to, to build a quality project, you know, we're better off in the long run for everybody, all the way around.
Rafael Menez, followed by Cordell Hindler.
I'll be brief on this topic because I'm limited in how much I can say, being a planning commissioner. But I would note that on a consent calendar item that was brought up and they passed by the council when they were discussing, well, it wasn't really discussed because it was just a consent calendar item, but when the housing element and attached to it, the safety element and the environmental justice element were assigned out to, I believe, a contractor to run the various processes associated with the updating of the plan elements, evacuation was explicitly tagged within the safety element. So to respond to the prior commenter, yes, the city's evacuation setup is explicitly going to be looked at with, within the general plan revisions that are going to take place this year. With regards to the role of the planning commission and city rules and state rules, I think it's important to realize as this presentation has gone out of its way to emphasize that the state's intent with these new laws, with these new regulations, is to limit the discretion of cities as a whole, city councils, planning commissions, any sort of non-administrative entity that just does a one-level review, to be able to make subjective judgments. If there are objective standards, then the planning commission can apply them. But if there are subjective standards, and the problem is a lot of things, as this presentation went over, can be defined as subjective standards, then the state has been going on on issue after issue after issue over the past several years to dismantle the ability to apply subjective standards. I don't know if everybody recalls the cell phone towers ordinance that was brought up back when 5G was coming in, a few years back, I think that was. And the whole discussion around objective versus subjective standards with regards to that. Well, objective versus subjective standards with regards to SB 9 and with regards to all the other items that have been discussed under this item tonight is the same thing. The state doesn't want discretion and subjectivity. The state wants development and it's willing to use its power to compel it as far as it possibly can. And if it finds out that a given method doesn't work, why? Then it might try a different law. Thank you.
Mr. Hindler, can you hear us?
Can you hear me okay?
Go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so, good evening, Mayor Salimi, Council. My name is Cordell Hindler and I'm a Richmond resident. So I'll try to sum it up quickly. So I kind of agree with the first two speakers, Debbie Long and Pete Murray. I personally would not live anywhere near a residential area where it's like, you know, where it's a risk of a, of a fire hazard because a, a person like me cannot afford to, to buy one of those units. And that's like, that's a fire, that's a fire hazard. So I kind of agree with Ms. Debbie Long. I agree with her. It's like, that's a, that's a risk. So I wouldn't take no chances, I would not have nobody, a tenant or a new person would come in there and I would say, uh-uh, that's not, that's not possible because it's a fire hazard. So we're gonna be in a wildfire season really soon. So I like the presentation and I agree with some of the other speakers. That's it.
That concludes the comments.
Thank you. That concludes item 8B. Excellent presentation, a lot of things to cover. And if the council wish to have more information and have another presentation on this item, please let me know. We can have staff to come back again. And as Ms. Debbie Long mentioned, she was mentioning SB 99. 99? Yes. More information. Perfect. Let's move on to item number nine, consent calendar. Tonight we have seven items. Is any of those items wish to be pulled by any council member at this moment? Councilmember Martinez Ruben, would you like to pull anything?
No.
Thank you. Any council member here who wish to pull any item here? None?
I'll move approval of the consent calendar.
We do have a public comment card.
Yes. Oh, because, please, go ahead.
Rafael Menez? For 9E.
Very briefly, for 9E, it notes that the property the Faria House sits on is deed restricted to be a park and therefore limited in its uses and not required to be transferred away from the housing agency, I guess the housing successor agency, like all the other properties that the city, unlike all the other properties that the city controls, aside from the one other that's under a similar exemption due to it being deed restricted as open space. My question would be, how would the restrictions on that land limit the city's ability to engage in alternate solutions with regards to the Faria House dispute? Because I know it's been mentioned at past meetings that the property simply be sold as a way to deal with that problem. But if there's deed restrictions on a land, can the city simply sell the house and maintain possession of the land or is it not even able to do that? Thank you.
It is something that we can answer. Would you like to get back to Mr. Menez?
We'll have to get back to Mr. Menez on that. That's a question that came up and is gonna require some additional research.
Thank you, Mr. Murray. At this moment, I'll turn it back to Councilmember Toms, who had a motion on the table. Any second? One second. Madam, you have a question?
I do, I just have a quick question. It's actually two questions with regards.
Councilmember Mayor Protam Murphy, go ahead.
With regards to item 9F. So I just wanna make sure I'm reading right the progress report. Is it saying that our city, so it, it lists out that there's required 128 units for RENA. What I'm reading from the progress report, and I just wanna be clear, is it says that we haven't built any very low or low housing units of those required 128? Is that what I'm reading?
Yeah, I'll ask Director Whalen to comment on that.
That's correct. Issued building permits were those category of units. We have not in this cycle.
Which is from 2015?
Correct.
Okay. And then continuing on that report, it says, it mentions fiscal impact on the staff report as typical. My question is, is there a city, a city fund outside of the funding and general fund that would help us move forward in developing new housing units?
Yes, we, we do have a affordable housing fund.
How much does, does that fund have?
I don't have the number off the top of my head right now. I can take a look at the, the report and get back to the council.
It's, if I may, it's on the previous agenda item.
What's the fund number?
What's the fund? Yeah, that's what the question.
See, I have it right in front of me here. The cash balance after taking into account the SAHA project would be just over $2 million.
Okay. And that money would be used to fulfill the RENA unit requirements if this council decided to move forward?
I'm, I'm sorry. Mayor, could you repeat the question?
Yeah, I'm sorry about that. I was, part of me was asking a question, but I just wanted to make sure I'm clear. So what you're saying is there's $2 million as a, what is the fund called? Housing asset fund? Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct.
Okay. And that fund is used or, or could be used to fulfill the 128 RENA units that are required for the report, as per the report? Is that what I'm hearing, Director Whalen?
The fund could be used to support the development of affordable housing units in Pinot. I, I don't know if that amount would, would, you know, accommodate the number of RENA units that the city has remaining in this cycle.
Okay, thank you. That's all, Mayor, thank you.
You're welcome. Madam City Clerk, roll call, please.
Councilmember Martinez Ruben?
Yes, is there a motion to approve already and a second?
Yes, motion and second.
Thank you, yes.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes.
Councilmember Tave?
Yes.
Mayor Protam Murphy?
Yes.
Mayor Salimi?
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, that concludes item number.
I, I had my hand up.
We have a.
It looks like we, well, we had completed public comment.
I will go back and let Mr.
Go ahead, Mr. Hindler.
Yes, this is regarding the nine, the first three items on the consent counter. I, I didn't see that part regarding the minutes. I was looking at them and I said, when I saw the German time, I was like, almost midnight? I'm, I was, I was appalled. I was like, I have, because I've attended other city council meetings in West County and sometimes they end their meeting like around 10:00 or so and I figured that, I mean, to me, that's a burden to staff because they, they get burned out, like, you know, after the meetings and it's like, I feel that to me, that's, we have to be more considerate to city staff because they work, they work most of the day and I feel that it's, that's not, it's not fair to me or, or the public have to wait till almost midnight. And that's like, but I do support the minutes though. But as far as like, you know, 9C, this is an example of, of a hybrid model. So everyone is in the room, except me, I'm, I'm somewhere else. So I do support 9A and 9C and 9D and that's it.
Thank you, sir. That concludes public comment, item number nine. Then I will move on to item number 10, public hearing. Tonight we have one public hearing regarding the ordinance amending chapter 9.24 of the municipal code to regulate the use and sale of fireworks in the city of Pinot. And the action tonight is conduct a public hearing and approve the first reading of the ordinance. City Attorney Casher, good evening again.
Thank you, Mayor Salimi. Good evening, members of the council, staff and members of the public. Eric Casher, City Attorney, I'll be presenting this item and thank you for adding the PowerPoint. So as mentioned by the mayor, the action before the council is to conduct a first reading of this ordinance, amending chapter 9.24 of the Pinot Municipal Code regulating the use and sale of fireworks within the city and to make our ordinance consistent with and align with the Contra Costa County fireworks ordinance. Let's see, this doesn't appear to be working. Okay, actually, maybe it does. Great. So by way of background, in June of 2021, the Contra Costa County Board of Supervisors amended its fireworks ordinance to enhance and modernize regulations on the possession, manufacture, sale, use and discharge of fireworks. In and around that time, the city council was aware of this change and there was an interest in bringing our ordinance in alignment with the Contra Costa County ordinance. So the city council asked the staff, take a look at our existing ordinance to see if it could benefit from an update. By way of background, the city currently regulates the use and sale of fireworks and that chapter of the municipal code is chapter 9.24. It's not clear to me exactly when that ordinance was put into place, but it's definitely a bit outdated. It's very short in scope and so it, it was certainly ready for an update. As mentioned, the council, following the, the county's update, the council directed the city staff and the city attorney to take a look at our existing ordinance to provide an update and enhance the ordinance where it needed enhancement. So what does our current ordinance do? It's very basic and straightforward. It just prohibits the use and sale of fireworks in the city with the limited exception of city council-approved fireworks displays by qualified vendors. So as we all know, there's been, historically, there have been some firework displays that have been put on by the city. Our ordinance does allow for that. What our, our current ordinance does not do is define what a firework is. It's very limited in that regard and it doesn't get into a whole lot of detail regarding being able to impose this or enforce this ordinance against residential properties where there's being, there's fireworks that are being discharged at homes. So the changes to the proposed ordinance that you have, so there's a staff report and the ordinance follows as an attachment, the, the key changes to the ordinance is it clarifies and expands the definition of fireworks and it makes it consistent with the Health and Safety Code definition that is pretty much state law. It makes private property owners liable for the possession, manufacture, sale, offer to sell, use or discharge of fireworks on their property. So it places a responsibility on private property owners for their property in any of these activities on their property. And it requires the qualified vendors conduct fireworks displays by duly licensed, be duly licensed and permitted. So this was one change that was requested by the municipal code update subcommittee, which is different from the Contra Costa County ordinance. We wanted to reserve the right to have a fireworks display here in the city that is approved by the city council. So we've added language to our ordinance to allow for that type of a display. As mentioned, the municipal code update subcommittee met on February 28th to review the proposed ordinance. We presented the version of the county ordinance that would, that we were gonna be bringing forward to the city council. The subcommittee did recommend approval of the proposed ordinance with the noted exception that I mentioned, which is to add for the option for the city to have a fireworks display by a qualified vendor. And there was also a comment regarding making sure that the qualified vendor is properly, duly licensed and permitted. And so we have that requirement included in the language of the proposed ordinance as well. So the staff recommendation is for the city council to conduct a first read of this proposed ordinance at its meeting today. If approved on first read, the ordinance will come back on consent at the next meeting and it'll be approved at that point. It will then go into effect 30 days from the second read and it would be in place in time for the July 4th holiday and the firework season. So that concludes my report and I'm happy to answer any questions that the council may have.
Thank you, City Attorney Casher. Straightforward presentation and request. I would ask this council member to combine the questions and comments. Councilmember Tave?
So on that slide that mentioned the, on their property, does that include the street? I, I think what winds up happening is someone lights fireworks off and then our, our officers or code enforcement gets there and nobody's done it, right? And then there's no witnesses and no, nothing's happened. How do we plan on addressing if somebody does in front of their house and, and, or in, in a public right of way or something like that?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Tave. So the ordinance does allow for it to be enforced against individuals. So there would be the need to identify the individual who is using the fireworks or discharging them in the public right of way. This does account for the situation where there are fireworks being discharged in a, like a backyard, for example, or on a front yard. But it's really, some of this is, it becomes a practical question of code enforcement and, you know, do we know who, are we able to identify and locate who is the, the individual? What's different from this ordinance, different from what we previously had? The prior ordinance doesn't have anything regarding if there were fireworks discharged in, on a residential property. We, we didn't have a way to enforce that against a, a property owner. So this does beef that up, but, you know, it, it just defines private property as their property. So that wouldn't include the right of way, the public right of way.
Got it, thank you.
Councilmember Toms?
Yes, thank you. I have no questions, just, you know, that we support, the committee supports and recommends approval of this.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Ruben?
Thank you, Mayor Salimi. I'm looking for the language in the, what's draft ordinance right now. Two things caught my eye. One of them, and, and it's at least to my question, I'm looking on page 127 of 131 and chapter 9.24, use of fireworks sale. I'm thinking of myself as, as pretending that I'm a lover of fireworks and that I want to have them on my property and, and then, and then want to not abide by whatever ordinance is here. So if I were looking at, at this ordinance and wanted to quote it and say, city of Pinot, you know, I can, I can have fireworks on my property because. you know, I can, I can have fireworks on my property because, because what I see here is about the sale and I'm not selling them. I am only, you know, have them, I have them with me to use, if I even admitted that. But my question is, why are we, why is the, in the, in the ordinance itself, sale stands out to me, even though in your presentation, City Attorney, you mentioned that liability begins with possession. But I don't see that until much later in the language of this. So why do we have use of fireworks sale? Why is it categorized that way? Why are we seeing it as a sale issue primarily or first? That's one question. And then the other is, in your staff report, you mentioned that with the changes, I'm paraphrasing here, I'm also looking for that language, the, the ordinance allows, the updated ordinance would permit code enforcement to issue citations for violation of the ordinance. But I don't see related language about that on the ordinance itself. And I think, well, and I'm wondering why that is.
Please go ahead, City Attorney Casher.
Great. So thank you for the questions, Councilmember Martinez Rubin. Asked, so it's a good question. The use of the word sale in the title, that's just a carryover from our existing ordinance, the chapter 9.24, use of fireworks dash sale, that is the existing language. We could certainly strike that language if, or the reference to sale if that is in any way unclear. The prohibition is provided for in chapter 9.24.020 and it reads, no person shall possess, manufacture, sell, offer to sell, use or discharge any fireworks. So that is the, the kind of catch-all language of what's being prohibited by this ordinance. But use of fireworks, sale, we could expand that. The prior version of the ordinance only prohibited the use and sale. And so I think that's probably why that language is there. But that's the reason for that. And I think the question, the second question related to reference to code enforcement, the enforcement provision is really 9.24.050, which reads, the city may seek compliance with this chapter by any remedy allowed under this code and any other remedy allowed by law. So that would include code enforcement and then any civil action required to enforce the code as well.
Thank you for that. So I was again trying to, pretending that I was someone who, who wouldn't mind violating this, right? And wanted to use fireworks and wanting to cite the ordinance. And because, because it's not explicitly, because the enforcement aspect is not as explicit, I have to refer to another part of the code and maybe that's the way our code is written. It just, I wanted to see that statement about what and who can enforce this as part of, of this, as part of the language here. Don't know if it's necessary. I'm just reading it as a prospective potential violator of the code and trying to prevent such a person from, from, you know, trying to make a point that he, they were not aware of the ordinance because it's not explicit enough. Yeah. Not that we can, I don't know, we can do much about that. But that's, that was my reaction when I didn't see that explicit language about enforcement as part of what's been, being presented tonight. Can we include?
Through the chair, we certainly can. Part of the reason, this is essentially identical to the county ordinance. So part of the interest in adopting the language is that it creates an alignment with the county ordinance such that our code enforcement staff, and if there's any overlap with county, they're operating from the same regulations and they're able to essentially understand these requirements in the same way. So that's part of the reason it's written this way. I guess we certainly could adjust the language, but this is currently identical to the county language as it reads.
So the answer, yes, we could. At this moment, it's identical to the language. Let me ask it to the council. Councilmember Martinez Rubin would like to make a modification, add some language.
Well, I don't know that it's necessary. I'm just thinking about people who are, who don't comply with ordinances and trying to make as explicit as possible, whatever document that they might eventually resort to, to try to excuse their, their ill behavior. If that makes any sense. I don't know if it's necessary to, to make the changes. I would go by City Attorney's recommendation. I just, I just think that oftentimes people, I shouldn't even say that. I shouldn't even qualify it that way. But I tend to think that there may be some people who will use as an excuse the fact that there is, that the language in an ordinance is not as explicit as it, as it could be. But I'm also thinking about people who want to read it in layperson's terms, not in, not as a legal document. And perhaps that's, our ordinances are written that way. So I just don't know which direction to go.
I think at this moment, City Attorney Casher, you stated that this is what the county has been doing and will pursue with what the county is doing at this moment.
As long as our code, as long as indeed we have added additional enforcement authority or augmented enforcement authority, because I think that was a prom, one of the problems with, with trying to do something about illegal use of fireworks.
Through the chair, I can offer, this is definitely an enhancement from the prior ordinance. The language of the prior ordinance actually appears on page 127 and it's the language that's lined through, the strike through. So that is the existing chapter 9.24. And so everything below that is the new language. So just for, for point of reference.
So in, pardon me, one more question. In addition to the ad hoc committee, has our fire chief, have our fire chief and our police chief reviewed this language and found it acceptable with regard to what they have to do to follow up and, and deal with people who violate the ordinance?
So this is a question to the fire chief and the police chief. I'll start with the fire chief. Please go ahead.
The fire chief, yeah, I've conferred with City Attorney and I find the changes exactly.
Thank you. Police Chief Gang, good evening, sir.
Good evening. Thanks for asking. So yes, this was run by both the fire chief and myself. And I also actually applaud the work that City Attorney Casher did with this and he worked close in hand with Fire Chief Wine Coupe on this. And I think it really does enhance our abilities to have enforcement action the way it reads at this time. I don't think we need to add any language here. I think what we have to understand is that these aren't written for laws and also ordinances are not written for people that violate the law. So the fact that they're, that we're worried about some language that maybe somebody will, will not do some illegal activity, I don't see that as really being an impact. But this does give us the opportunity to be able to enforce those type of, gives us the capabilities to enforce those type of laws and ordinances, which was not in the previous rendition of the ordinance. So I applaud the work that's on here and we agree with the language that's in here.
Thank you, Chief. Councilmember Martinez, please go ahead.
Oh, no, no, no. Thank you to all then for, for the work that you've done. We'll give it a run. Thank you.
Any other questions, ma'am? None. Mayor Protem Murphy, please go ahead.
No questions from me. Great job, City Attorney Casher, and great job, Councilors Tave and Toms.
Thank you. I don't have any questions. We have any question from the, comments from the public, please?
Yes, we do. Bob Cop?
Well, thank you. I want to answer Martinez Rubin's. The question here is, is it against the law to sell fireworks? So is it against the law to sell fireworks? Is it against the law to buy fireworks? So there shouldn't be any problem with what's proposed to go ahead and go by the state laws, county laws and our laws against the fireworks. Reason they got this problem is too many people don't know how to use them and young kids get hurt. That's the main reason. There is the law on the books for that. And far as a company that does fireworks, if you want to hire them to go out and shoot fireworks off in the bay, one thing you ought to add to that list is have them put up a bond in case something goes haywire. I had to put up a bond for the city, myself and for the gentleman that owns the little shopping center and to cover the city and everybody in case something went wrong at the car show. And there's a lot more chance of an accident happening with fireworks than it is for what we've been doing. So I think that we ought to go by the laws and back up the police department and the county. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments from the public?
Yes, thank you. We have one remote comment. Mr. Cordell Hindler.
That's me. So good evening again, Mayor Salimi, council. And thank you, City Attorney Casher, for that thought, well thought report. And I agree. I looked at the language and I was like, it is crystal clear. So I'm asking that the council will approve it so I can get it on to the next agenda. So that's it.
Thank you. This being said, I will turn it back to the council and invite somebody to make a motion to approve it.
Motion to approve.
And I'll second.
Roll call, Madam City Clerk.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin.
I'd like to amend the motion. To read, I really would like to exclude that sale and just use of fireworks, just remain broad, as broad as it is. In other words, the header, use of fireworks, just leave it there without the added sale. So it doesn't highlight sale.
Would you mind setting the page of your comment?
Page 127. It's the title of the ordinance, chapter 9.24. It reads, use of fireworks and there's a dash, sale. And she's proposing to remove the word sale.
Just a.
Go ahead.
Question of that is that if somebody is selling fireworks, are they necessarily using them? So is having use of fireworks dash sale more inclusive of any activity that can take place?
Through the chair, that's my read as well. This is a regulation of both the use of fireworks and the sale. The definition is even more expansive than that to include possession and manufacture. But this is more inclusive than just to say use of fireworks because it really does regulate more than that.
Thank you for helping me understand that.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez. Are you still holding your motion?
I retract my attempt. That's right.
You retract your motion. Perfect. Councilmember Tave.
No.
No question. Okay.
Call for the vote.
So we have a vote and we have a second and we are on a roll call. Any other questions at this moment from anybody? No? No? Okay, go ahead, please.
Councilmember Martinez Rubin.
Yes.
Councilmember Toms.
Yes.
Tave.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Salimi.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Thank you, City Attorney Casher. That concludes item number 10. Then we'll move on to item number 11A, which is provide direction on whether to include in the voter poll regard, provide direction on whether to include in the voter poll regarding a potential charter city and real estate transfer tax ballot measure questions on certain other matters of community interest and the direction we'll be discussing and providing direction. City Manager Murray, please go ahead.
Yes, thank you. I have a brief PowerPoint presentation. Given the late hour, we'll make this very quick. As you know, the city council directed that the city is going to hire a polling firm to poll voters regarding a potential November 2022 ballot measure. There's, you know, some startup and fixed costs related to conducting a poll of statistically representative sample of voters. And so there might be an opportunity for the poll to incorporate some questions beyond those directly addressing the ballot measure. And we just wanted to make the city council aware of the opportunity, the potential opportunity to ask questions on other matters of community interest. It's not a recommendation, but there is this startup cost that we expect will be perhaps $25,000 to $30,000 to conduct this survey of voters. And if the council had a burning desire to ask an additional question or to on some other matter, it might be possible to incorporate it. I do want to note that ultimately we would defer, need to defer to the consultant conducting the polling to confirm that there was room to add any questions. There is a natural limit to the length of polls before respondents abandon the poll. And there are some challenges with asking questions on dissimilar topics in polls. So we're just flagging this in the event that the city council would like to add questions, not a recommendation. Happy to conduct a straight ahead poll just regarding the charter city and real property transfer tax measure. Happy to answer any questions about that.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms, please.
Sure. A couple of the, the questions that, if there's room to ask, would be, how are we as far as communicating our needs of infrastructure improvements of, you know, what we would be spending additional money on if this measure would pass? So how are we, how, how are we at communicating the need? And then the other thought that I had was regarding climate issues and trying to determine if, you know, the public is concerned about climate change issues and what, you know, how far are they willing to, to go to address it in, you know, locally? Whether it's, you know, investing in charging stations, additional solar, or even an electrification ordinance. So that might be too much, but if the consultant can kind of, you know, narrow that down, that would be great.
Thank you. That's how are we communicating our infrastructure needs? Is that the first question?
That's correct.
And it has to be an open-ended question or a close?
I'm sure that the consultants will know how to frame the question. But what I, what I would want to get to is, is the public aware of our infrastructure needs? And are we communicating that? Is that communicated to them?
Perfect. And the second question is about the climate.
Yeah. Do, do they see the climate crisis as, you know, a local issue that can be addressed locally either by investing in charging stations, solar, or even an electrification ordinance? And I would completely leave that up to the consultant. They're going to know how to frame that question.
Agreed. Yeah.
Yes. Thank you, Councilmember Toms. Any other comments? Mayor Protem Murphy?
In terms of questions, I love the, first of all, I have a question. Are we going to see these questions before this survey is distributed and disseminated?
They, the consultants wouldn't normally run the questions because they kind of have a standard formula for how to construct them.
Okay.
So I don't think, I'm not sure that the timing would allow, given that we want to get the survey deployed and the, the timing for our next regular council meeting.
Okay.
So I wouldn't, couldn't guarantee that.
Okay. Then the only question I would ask, I definitely was going to mention something around the climate crisis. I'd of course mention something in there if possible about the wildfire prevention. But it seems like that's going to be somewhat of a, of a consultant decision point. I would only ask around, something around our participatory budgeting process. I know we've introduced a new tool called the Balancing Act. I'd be interested to see how many residents actually know about that first and foremost. So it'd be great to have. So it'd be great to have that, but more importantly, it'd be of interest to me around some question that leans into metrics or evaluation of participatory budgeting and how residents are understanding how we mold that process here in Pinot. That's all for me.
I just want to clarify what the question is, please. Can you restate it?
Sure, Mayor. So in addition to a question around the climate crisis and its impact here, how we see, how the, excuse me, how the public sees that issue, I would love for us to explore a question with regards to how we are modeling in our town participatory budgeting. That question can lean into whether or not folks know about the tool that we've launched this past year, or if folks have other ideas with regards to it. And again, I'm assuming that the consultant is knowledgeable about something to this effect, but that would be my question, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor Protem. City Manager Murray, do you understand the nature of the question? Is this something that you believe the consultant would be able to address?
Yeah, they'd be able to shape a question around that. Again, we want to remind folks that the consultants are going to have an opinion about whether any additional questions can fit within the survey instrument and also whether, you know, they can get to answers pretty quickly on some of these questions, but we'll put those to them. Thank you.
You're welcome. Councilmember Tave?
So I'm kind of centering on those same questions, but I typically like in polling the how likely are you to blank, right? So just fill in the blanks. How likely are you to vote for a tax for, to improve lighting, roads, parks, housing assistance, green projects? If they do like that scale of 1 to 10, how likely are you to vote for that? I think we'll kind of gauge a little bit of the temperature for the transfer tax and it might also help with the education of what the transfer tax is. I'm not a polling professional, but I do like those questions because I think it's direct. And they're quick, too, so I think most likely people will stay on the poll. And then how likely are you, senior center, you know, to use senior center, the playhouse? And how likely are you to vote for a tax for additional services? So that's kind of where I was centering when I saw this was, you know, centering around that. But we'll leave it to the professionals to figure out how to frame all that. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Martinez Rubin.
Thank you. I would like us to review the purpose of the polling. How will we use the information that will be gleaned from the polling? What will be the next step? And then I'll have some questions related to that.
So the purpose of the polling is to get a sense of likely voters' support for a potential tax measure to gauge their, the persuasiveness of different funding priorities to gauge the persuasiveness of possible opposition statements. So it's a pretty standard voter poll methodology and formula. It's similar to methodologies the city has used for prior voter measure polls, including that for a special parcel tax for fire and in past years, utility user tax revisions, the measure Ss and the like.
Right. So we're trying to gauge, one, what the likelihood that voters that are going to be polled are going to be representative of the voters that end up actually voting on two things, on whether we want a charter city and whether there's some, they're receptive to a transfer tax. So I would like to not muddy the waters and leave the simplicity of the questions that are to be created by the pollster as they are. I think, one, to be able to gauge whether people even understand what a charter city is, to be able to understand what a transfer tax is and who it impacts are questions that still have to be, you know, written by the pollster to get a sense of whether would-be voters even understand that. And then if they can make any projection or prediction whatsoever for us to then use what they come away with, the survey results, to inform the next step, which I think, I'm not sure if we talked about this yet, but which would be an informational, the informational component of, you know, a next step toward a measure. So I think there are going to be enough questions to be developed by the pollsters on the two components of their poll. The charter city, how that, what that means to would-be voters, and what a real property transfer tax means to them. Where there might be room for questions are how that real property transfer tax is to be used, because I don't believe we have determined that or decided on that. And if that's the kind of information that would be helpful to us to take the next step, then the questions related to categories of surfaces that we've come up, we've talked about again and again that need additional funding, then that could be a set of questions for the pollsters. But I think I'm going to defer to their expertise and want to keep the polling as simple as possible centered around these two things that are already part of it. What is a charter city? And what is a property transfer tax? And how can that? We also have to ask questions related to the amount of transfer tax. And I don't think, well, we've talked about that yet, but I think that's part of what they're going to recommend.
City Manager Murray, are those questions already formulated? And is this something that the consultant is already aware of? I'm sure there's already a set of questions related to the real estate transfer tax and this will be used. Are those already?
Yeah, so that would be part of a standard formula. They were, they would ask for folks' priorities regarding how the money be spent, though we've been talking about it being a general tax, so it couldn't be obligated to a specific use, but it's allowable to gauge voters' priorities around different, you know, community services and needs. So that's certainly going to be part of, you know, the standard poll that the consultants come up with. So I don't think there's any question that that's already going to be covered.
Thank you.
The question really is if there's any additional capacity, and that's up to the judgment of the consultants, because they're the experts. If there's a possibility to add any other questions, you know, does the council want to try and get representative community input on other issues? Fine, either way, from, you know, my perspective, just want you to be aware of the opportunity.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Rubin, does this answer your question?
No, but I do have a comment on the, you know, whether we're going to see the questions or not.
Oh, just questions, right now, please. Just questions.
I think in selecting our pollster, a good practice is to have the questions available, at least to the council, who has a vested interest in seeing that the questions are going to be centering around these two, these two matters. I don't feel very comfortable about not being able to see questions before they actually are made public, you know, before the pollster actually uses them. So can you please just let the pollsters know that we, at least what I would be, very interested in seeing the questions before they are released to the public? Thank you.
That's a good question. Would it be possible for the city council to look at this question before it goes to the public, please?
So it really comes down to a matter of timing. So if we're going to wait for, you know, the next regular council meeting to discuss the questions, provide feedback, is the council going to have, it's just going to defer the implementation of the survey? So that's really, you know, that's not ideal, but, and both of the, so we've solicited proposals for firms to conduct the polling and the public education. We received proposals from two teams. Both of those teams have experience doing charter city and real property transfer tax polling measures. Survey methodology is really quite straightforward. I would be reluctant for us to wade into the specific language of the survey questions because I think they probably have a well-honed methodology. So, you know, I think it's, it really depends on the will of the council, but we are, you know, we do have some time constraints we're running up against. So I'll leave it to the council.
Thank you, Councilmember Toms. Do you have a comment?
Yeah, just a kind of a comment is that I'd be interested in seeing, but not having any decision points on and reviewing and approving them. I just want to, I'd like to be copied on them when they go out.
Oh, certainly. Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions? Councilmember Martinez Rubin?
Yeah, that's all. That's, I mean, that's part of the transparency of a consultant or pollster, and that's one of the highlights of having someone who knows to.
I'm sorry, I might have misunderstood your comment. I thought you were hoping to have a round of reviews.
No, 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 no.
It's certainly possible to provide a copy of the questions. It'll be a public document.
Thank you.
Thank you. I have a question regarding our target group. I was mentioning, would it be possible to target the group to see specifically the high propensity voters? And what it is, it's the people who have been voting at least four times throughout five last election. This is going to be a good representation how the, the answer will be. If we just go and ask questions randomly to people from Pinot who don't vote, and we have data providing us who the high propensity voters would be?
Yeah, the, any, you know, all the polling firms that have submitted proposals have, are trying to get responses from likely voters. And so they're all going to be using a model to screen folks for likely voters because they're trying to forecast the outcome of the vote for, on these topics. So they all have likely voter screening methods.
Excellent. And would it be possible to limit the question in the same format that we are limited to by the county? I believe the question we'll be asking will be a two-part question, but at the same time will be limited in 80 words? Is that what it is or more or less? But would it be able to have at least the same format of questioning?
Yeah, so the consultants will craft it in a way that they think most likely mimics a actual ballot question, because they want to get as representative a set of responses as possible.
Well, the consultant asks twice the same question in two different ways to see what the result is. I'm just thinking about sometimes the grammar does matter and.
So, no, they wouldn't traditionally ask the question in more than one way. I think they would craft it based on the experience of past ballot measures. Yeah, so I don't think they would ask it in multiple ways.
Thank you. I will then go back to public comments and come to comments of the city council and then we will move forward. Madam City Clerk?
Yes. We have received four cards. One of them didn't have a name on them, so if you don't hear your name, please let me know. Peter Murray, Rafael Menes, and Debbie Long, and then we have Mr. Hindler remotely. I'll put your name on it. Thank you. Yes. Thank you.
We should have put the podium closer to you on that side.
Thing about language, and it does make a heck of a difference, because I don't know if you're aware, but I mean, you got Dan Bornstein, who now makes a practice of looking at the language that people use in ballot measures and such. And when he finds that there's leading questions, he jumps on that with both feet. And in something like this, where you're proposing a tax, that could be a death nail. So I have my questions, and I go, so you might ask what purpose you're going to use these funds for, and especially considering that the city has routinely balanced its budget, it has reserves, it has a set aside reserve for unfunded retirement mandates. You might also ask, you know, why now? And I think you've kind of alluded to it, but that's going to be the serious question that I would like to know is, you know, why now? You might ask, why we want to change the government, the governance system that works and provides assurances of judicial oversight? You also might ask, you know, the question, do people realize that these charter city votes are always seemingly tied to the imposition of a new tax? And this one is, is a proposed real property transfer tax. My opinion, as you all know, is that this tax is for nothing. It has no required nexus of a benefit to the exiting community member, not even a handshake. And while a number of local cities that people kind of point to deem themselves charter cities and as if that has some sort of esteem to it, none of these cities, or even remotely a city that we'd want to emulate, either financially or administratively. A charter city also opens the door, and you might explain this in a question, a question form, the possible potential political and nefarious actions. A charter can be amended to perform in undesirable ways. And we've had a routine glimpse of these nefarious actions. We have only to look to the city of Bell in Southern California to see overflowing, unfettered corruption, corruption only because they could. And somewhere down the line, we know that this possibly could happen even here from the past. So why make it easier for others down the road to take the community to the cleaners like the city of Bell? And what are the reasons to remove ourselves from the state's general law practices? You might ask a question related to that. Beat you. Thank you.
So with regards to the questions in this proposed polling, I think there's a couple of items brought up by the National Civic League, as I mentioned the last time this came up, that will be worth mentioning with regards to this vote. Like, for example, for a sample question, would you be more likely to vote for a charter city if it encompassed adopting ranked choice voting for its SIS elections and adopting a real property transfer tax of X amount, or if it was just adopting a real property transfer tax of X amount? And I would also like to note, with regards to the prior commenter's concern of ethics, that one of the National Civic League's recommendations for the construction of a charter, that wouldn't be done if we just narrowly construed it as only a real property transfer tax, is to establish a board of ethics. And I'm going to quote it. It says, "Board of Ethics: The city council shall by ordinance establish an independent board of ethics to administer and enforce the conflict of interest and financial disclosure ordinances. No member of the board may hold elective or appointed office under the city or any other government or hold any political party office. Insofar as possible under state law, the city council shall authorize the board to issue binding advisory opinions, conduct investigations on its own initiative and on referral or complaint from individuals or resident, subpoena witnesses and documents, refer cases for prosecution, impose administrative fines, and to hire independent counsel. The city council shall appropriate sufficient funds to the board of ethics to enable it to perform the duties assigned to it and provide annual training and education of city officials and employees, including candidates for public office regarding the ethics code." So what I'm saying is that there are options in constructing a charter to require ethics to correct against the concerns around corruption that the prior commenter made. But we don't know whether the public would support those options if we don't even ask the question in the polling. That's why I request that there be two questions added to the polling, if there's space. One- One, would you be more or less likely to support the adoption of a charter city if it included both a real property transfer tax and the adoption of ranked choice voting? Two, would you be more or less likely to support the adoption of a charter city if it included the establishment of an independent city board of ethics required as a charter element, and the adoption of a real property transfer tax? I think that having the option for additional items in the charter added as explicit questions in the polling would allow for us to get a sense of whether or not the public would be more likely to support a charter city if it covered more topics, or whether, as is the concern that has been previously stated, it would just confuse the matter and be opposed. Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to clarify, this is not about becoming a charter city, it's just about the question that we'll be asking.
Good evening. Maybe so, but I think the city citizens need to know what a charter city is, because that has yet to be discussed. A charter city is defined as giving local control, but that there's a lot more to it with a lot of pitfalls. They can control elections, enough said. They decide how recalls are handled, sidestepping accountability. They adopt their own process in how to handle city contracts, that can lead to cronyism. They decide how to finance public improvements, that can lead to bankruptcy. And it's a little-known fact, within California, charter cities have declared bankruptcy or insolvency. To date, no general law city has declared bankruptcy. They can make charitable gifts of public funds for public purposes, and they decide the classification of the public purpose. A charter city opens the door for lawsuits because the definition of its municipal affairs over which it has sovereignty, or whether it is a statewide concern and the legislation has authority, is often a legal determination for courts to resolve. In adopting the charter, a city will often reserve for itself the greatest amount of power it can when it adopts a charter. This means that when the charter is originally put to a vote, most often for a singular purpose, down the road, the council avails itself of the full power of a charter by including the following declaration in its charter, and says that its intention is for the city to avail itself of full power provided by the state constitution to charter cities. Besides what I've already listed, some of the consequences of that catch-all statement can be. Charter cities can create a sub-government in part of the city. It can create a strong mayor form of government. This leads to a mayor having almost total administrative authority with the city staff reporting to the mayor. It can regulate and govern the local police department. One of the candidates running for the council is already stating that they want to reimagine the role of policing, shifting of resources, and establishing a police oversight commission. Because they are in complete control of their finances as well as financing, a charter city can decide what debt-to-income revenue ratio they're comfortable with, without state oversight. The reality of being a charter city is that a city is granted special jurisdiction to create a new governance system. This will potentially supersede state laws concerning government structure, election management, financing, and contracting out services. Lastly, until the council determines why there's a need for additional taxation, since this is supposedly the purpose of wanting a charter city, and how they would propose to spend the money, which is taken directly out of homeowners' pockets, putting this out for voter polling is irresponsible and lacking of transparency without upfront accountability. Thank you.
Yes.
The next speaker is Bob Kopp, and then Mr. Hindler.
Yes, I want to bring, is it working? Yes, I want to bring, is it working? Okay. Yeah, I want to bring up that it is really easy for you to come up with these ideas. We've had, the city of Pinot has been around for like 110 years, and it's run real smooth, nothing just went wrong, so why in the world would you want to change something that is working? Some of the people on the, well, we only have one here that's been on the council for many, many years, off and on, I don't know why she would be interested in having a charter city. And this is something I would put out to the public. Just as people are aware, as an average home sells for $700,000 today, the transfer fee cost you now is $770. Half of it goes to the city, half goes to the county. As the previous meeting, members of the council were discussing charging additional $12 to $15 per hundred, per thousand of the sale. This would equal to $88,400 to $10,500 today, plus the $770. If the homeowner sells for 800 to a million, the sale could be $9,600, $15,000 in additional, plus the other amount of money, $880 to $1,500. This is absurd that you'd want to put this in, and how we can find out if the public likes this? I'll pay for putting an ad in the paper to let the people know what I just said. If you want to sell your house, you may have to pay $8,000, $8,000 to $10,000 to the city. We've already paid taxes at my house for 54 years. You have never helped us put a roof on, paint the house, do anything to upkeep the house, and now you're penalizing us for selling our house and wanting to move. This is not a transfer fee, it's a transfer tax, no matter how you look at it. So, I'm willing to, with some other people, put this into the Sunday paper, and let them read just what I just put here, and let them decide. You don't have to go to spend $30,000, $40,000 to find out if they want to pay this kind of money when they sell their house. And trying to have, you sell your house, and you want to split this fee with the buyer, that's a penalty for the buyer, it's a penalty for you. I don't think it's the right thing to do, and I'm really surprised that this council came up with this charter city idea. I have lost a lot of confidence in them because of this. I think you ought to be paying attention to the public. Some of you haven't lived in the city long enough to really know what the city of Pinot is about. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor, we will need a motion to extend the meeting.
Second.
I make a motion to extend the meeting at 11:30.
Second.
Your call.
Councilmember Martinez Ruben.
Oh, I think we need a second, right?
We, we have a second.
Got it? Okay, thank you. Yes.
Councilmember Toms.
Yes.
Tave.
Yes.
Mayor Protem Murphy.
Yes.
Mayor Salimi.
Yes.
Motion carries. The next speaker is Cordell Hindler.
That's me. Can, can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Thank you. So, good evening, Mayor Salimi, council. My name is Cordell Hindler, and I'm a Richmond resident. So, I kind of agree with the previous speaker, Bob. When I was looking at the, this charter, I was like, oh my goodness. I was like, I, I was appalled. I was like, the idea of a charter city, that Pinot want to be a charter city, I'm like, this does not, this does not fit for this. And so, I'm thinking that, I mean, because if you look at other cities in West County, El Torito became a charter city, and they had a committee at the time, and so, because if you recall, at the last meeting, when I had said that El Torito became a charter city, so they had a committee reprised of residents, you know, like to voice their concerns about the, about El Torito being a charter city. So, that's good for them, but I'm thinking that Pinot, I'm like, I'm thinking that that sounds like a little out of the ordinary, so I kind of agree with the other speakers. I think this charter city is like, is not good for the community. So, if you want, if you want some, I mean, I would vote with the, what do you call the, the consultant that will do this, so I'll let them handle it, so that's it.
That concludes the comments.
Thank you. So, just to, our discussion tonight with the council is not to discuss on becoming a charter city, it's to provide direction on the polls, and those were good comments. Thank you for stating those comments, but this is not the time for us to address those questions here, and I just want to limit the conversation on the polls only. Councilmember Tave, go ahead.
Yeah, my question was, you, Mr. Murray, you brought up a question about likely voters, or you wanted high propensity voters. I think likely is the middle row, just for clarification, where they would get a representative data set for, from people who are higher voters, or high propensity voters, all the way down to people who don't vote at all. I would just imagine, city manager, you could maybe infer, because we're not professionals on it, but they would slide that scale based on, on Pinot's voting records, right?
So, I don't know the details of the methodologies the two polling firms use, so they have a, they have an algorithm that attempts to. So, their goal is to forecast to the greatest degree of precision practical what the outcome of a vote would be if it were held when they do the survey. So, they have every interest in trying to determine who is most likely to vote. So, I don't know exactly how many years of prior voting record, I mean, obviously that gets complicated because there are folks who've never had the opportunity to vote in prior years and all that kind of stuff. So, my, so all of these organizations that have submitted proposals, there are two teams, both have highly qualified and regarded and well-known polling firms as part of those teams. I imagine they use all modern best practices for identifying the likely voters.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Yeah, I just heard that there was a suggestion to go one way, but I, I guess what we're saying is we want it representative of the entire city.
Yes.
Perfect. Okay. That's all ahead.
No, Mayor Protem.
Yes, so, a couple things. Number one, I want to remind folks that tonight's conversation is in regards to questions around a voter poll for said charter city. The charter city is not going to be decided by the council tonight, nor will it be decided by the council. It is decided by the voters of Pinot, correct?
Correct.
Thank you. I also just want to say that in Pinot, whether you live here, whether you moved here yesterday, you are welcomed here. This impetus to say that some people have a stronger voice than others is incorrect. So, if you're watching and you hear someone say, "You moved here yesterday," you are part of this conversation. We have to move forward. We have to include more people in this conversation. Tonight's conversation is about that. Lastly, Mr. Rafael Menes suggested two very important questions that I believe should be added to what the consultants would create as questions to poll the public. How might we add those two questions that he referenced as a part of the conversation tonight?
A city council member would suggest that those two questions get added to the slate, and presumably you all vote to provide direction of staff on what additional questions you requested the pollsters include.
Thank you, city manager Murray. I would request that those two questions be added, and I would ask Mr. Rafael Menes to send those two questions to the city manager, just to make sure we have those questions on deck. Thank you.
Can you, can you restate those two questions, please?
I don't remember them, except, I don't remember the exact word of them, but Mr. Rafael Menes did state them during his public comment, and if he would be so kind to send those to the city manager, that would be great.
Yes, I would ask Mr. Menes to ask those questions, just for the council to hear it again, if I may. Mr. Menes, restate those two questions, please, so the entire council can hear it. Again.
The first question was, would you be more or less likely to vote for a charter city if it included ranked choice voting in addition to the adoption of a real property transfer tax? And the second question was, would you be more or less likely to vote for the adoption of a charter city if it included the adoption of a board of ethics as part of the charter in addition to a real property transfer tax?
Thank you, Mr. Menes. Those are my suggestions. No further questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Toms.
I, I previously provided questions, and if the pollsters find that those would be appropriate to add, I would appreciate that.
Thank you. Councilmember Martinez Ruben.
Oh, yes, I, I would, would, I would be real curious to see the final set of questions because, you know, even, even as little as we have, as little or as much as we have talked about charter cities, the addition of questions further makes it, makes anyone who hasn't even been part of these discussions, it makes, it makes it even more difficult for them to really, I think, understand. So, I'm going to be real curious about the final set of questions, and I'm going to really be even more curious about the findings from this. And I want to also comment on the representativeness and the methodology that the pollsters are going to be using. It will be important to know what that is, considering that, and, and they will let, you know, city manager, you know, knowing that, that in, in the city of Pinot, there are different ways of, oh gosh, how do I phrase this? The communities that are, the different segments of our community vote in different ways. So, you have high propensity voters, as well as voters, as people who are going to be voting for the first time. The interests up in taxes for them also vary. So, however the pollster helps us identify what is meaningful to, to Pinolians who are likely to vote, meaningful with regard to what a charter city means at all, and what a tax means at all. Even that alone is going to be helpful. So, I want to again, again emphasize the necessity to, to keep this simple with the addition of even the addition, the added questions suggested by Mr. Menes. Noble as they are, those matters of rank voting, et cetera, aren't even matters that we have talked about here in council, and I, which makes me wonder again, how those questions are going to be asked. We haven't even talked about the implications of that here on council. So, thank you for listening, because I'm really trying to get a sense of what we're doing at all, and I think we're going awry.
Thank you. So, it looks like the council would like to perceive the direction that you're requesting, Mr. City Manager Murray. It looks like the council would like to move forward with the motion that also include the question that were provided by the city council members. One of them was by Councilmember Toms, is the public aware of the infrastructure needs? Question number two was, is the public aware of the climate issue? That is a local issue, correct? Is the public aware that climate issues are local issues? Question number three was by the mayor, Protem, I believe, how do you model participating? That, I think, the question was, how do you...
Participatory budgeting.
Yes, thank you. Question number five was by Councilmember Tave.
Four, question number four, I think.
Four?
If I could, Mr. Mayor, I, I think what we need to do is provide direction. I think staff can confirm that they've gotten some direction to the council.
Yeah, can you please restate those questions? I just want to make sure that we have them all.
So, I think it's valuable to go through so we make sure we're all on the same page. I think we're most of the way there. My notes are, the first three that the mayor has noted. Councilmember Tave, you asked about support for various services, city services.
Right, the most likely, I mean, there was a lot of them there, and I, I have notes, but I mean, in the interest of time, I, I think we, do we need a motion to approve all of the questions that we suggested, or is it just direction to staff? Because...
You need a motion. I mean, I would appreciate a motion with the direction.
I hear you.
There are just two others, ranked choice, the question about ranked choice voting, and the question about...
Well, what I wanted to ask was, you know, by us putting that in a motion, are we giving direction for the, because I would rather defer to the consultant with the input that we've given them versus saying, these are the questions we would like you to ask.
It's direction to staff to raise that, these with the consultant, and the consultant will ultimately decide whether they can be included.
Perfect. Thank you.
You guys are voting on the direction that we'll be asking the consultants. If they can include those questions, they might determine they can't.
Wonderful. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Questions? Question from Councilmember Tave, we have them correct.